Could I have all board members to their seats, please? We'll soon start. Board members to their seats, please. This June 26, 2014, regular meeting number 22 of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the place of reasons, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Spring Hill Elementary School Harmony Ensemble under the direction of Deborah Rodd.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. There was a Spring Hill Elementary School Harmony Ensemble under the direction of Deborah Rodd. You know, thanks to the students who came out to the school board meeting to sing National Anthem on the very first day of a summer break. What dedication. I know that, I have heard that there is even one student who is going to be flying out to India in two hours, but she was here to sing.
And the proud principal is right back at the back, Rhonda Redger-High.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Rhonda High.
Thank you.
And I don't know, parents that are here and brought your children, we thank you tonight. They were wonderful.
Let's give them another round of applause. Next title of business is certification of a closed meeting compliance. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Court of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened the closed meeting on June 26, 2014, to the best of each member's knowledge, all public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. The foregoing shall also be deemed to include the certification of each school board member who served on a student disciplinary committee that those closed committee meetings are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Section 2.2-3711A2 of the Court of Virginia, and that only student disciplinary matters were heard, discussed, or considered in those closed committee meetings. Is that a motion? Move by Mrs. Strauss and seconded by Ms. Evans. All those in favor, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous with Mr. Eleanor Cofax absent. And Ms. Schultz. Thank you. Next, I have some announcements. Ms. Eleanor Cofax is out of town on a family matter, and Ms. Elizabeth Schultz will be joining us a little bit later. I do have quite a few elected officials to recognize who are in the audience today. Please forgive me, my eyesight is getting, not getting any better these days, so if I miss anyone out there, please forgive me. So, I know that I have Scott Silverthorne, the mayor of Fairfax City. If, could you stand? Thanks for joining us, Mayor. And thank you for your service. And I have Carolyn Pitchis from a Fairfax City School Board. I have Drona Tram from Fairfax City School Board. There might be a couple of former Fairfax County School Board members who will be speaking during the citizen participation, Tina Horn and Mr. Stuart Gibson. Are they here yet? If you are, please rise. Okay, they will be joining us later on. Let me see, who else do I have? Is there any other elected official in the audience I'm missing? It's a last chance. All right? I'll continue with announcements, other announcements. If you would like to access tonight's agenda and related meeting documents, you can do so by going to the FCPS website, select School Board, and then Upcoming Meetings and Agendas. The meeting is also being streamed live on FCPS website homepage. Click on Watch School Board Live. If you have signed up to speak before the Board during citizen participation, please turn in 16 copies of your remarks at this time to the deputy clerk sitting in the section to my right. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is also on the table by the auditorium entrance. Please turn off or silence your cell phone. Next, we have a recognition of a business partner's name to the 2014 Virginia School Board Association Business Honor Roll. For that, let me call on Mr. Stork.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is absolutely my pleasure to recognize Fairfax County Public Schools' business partners. And we have many, and we have some amazing ones that have truly made a difference, and make a difference not only to broader school activities and school board and Fairfax County activities, but in particular schools, they have made a huge difference, and I think it's only fitting that we honor them in a setting like this. So, the collaboration between Fairfax County Public Schools and its business partners plays a crucial role in establishing, in supporting Fairfax County Public Schools, and aiding Fairfax County community, and focusing on the goal of providing the best possible public schools for every child in attendance. An appreciation of their support of FCPS and their commitment to our public school students, earlier this year, the school board nominated three businesses for inclusion on the Virginia School Board Association Business Honor Roll. I am pleased to announce that the VSB, the Virginia School Board Association, named all three businesses to the 2014 VSB Business Honor Roll. This evening, on behalf of the Board, I would like to welcome representatives from those businesses who are in attendance, and invite them to come forward when I call their names. First finalist for the FCPS Business Partner of the Year in 2011 and 2012, Time Warner Cable was named Business Partner of the Year for FCPS in 2013. Time Warner Cable is recognized for their partnership with Hutchinson Elementary School in Herndon. In just their fourth year as partners, Time Warner Cable has donated more than 3,000 mentoring hours to Hutchinson, sponsored multiple after-school activities, and engaged in school programs and field trips, mostly science, technology, engineering, and math, or STEM-related, through their Connect a Million Minds program. They developed and built a STEM lab, donated necessary items to the students and families, and have contributed nearly $150,000 to the school. Hutchinson Elementary School students are very excited to have Time Warner Cable employees as their mentors, and their nominator for the VSB Business Honor Roll emphasized that being paired with a Time Warner Cable mentor is like winning the lottery. So, they were very excited, as you can tell. Apple Federal Credit Union, also a very longtime partner of FCPS, and Apple Federal Credit Union Education Foundation have a 19-year history of accomplishing exceptional work to support FCPS, and in 2011 were recognized as FCPS Business Partner of the Year. In addition to their ongoing support of and funding for Great Beginnings, the Next Generation Teacher Induction Program, which includes a week-long summer teacher induction conference, Apple Federal also supports the annual Mentor Works Essay Contest, provides scholarships to students with the School Board Character and Laura Ashley Piper Awards, supports the annual State of the Schools effort, and is involved in a county-wide consortium called Collect for Kids that is dedicated to collecting school supplies for students in need. Apple Federal Credit donates hundreds of volunteer hours annually to FCPS, supports Junior Achievements Finance Park, provides financial workshops to FCPS employees, funds teacher grant requests, and operates 17 student-run credit unions. And as a finance major and business person, I greatly admire and appreciate all that they do on behalf of the schools. So, so far, I've identified Time Warner and Apple Federal Credit Union. If you all can come forward, we have one more group to recognize, but if there's anybody here from that, we'd like to have you come up here at the podium and for people to at least thank you while we're reading this. I apologize, I didn't bring you up before we started each of your sections, but I'm going to read the final section now. The final one's on the Fairfax County Chamber of Commerce. Do you have any others? Yes, sir. Thank you. Fairfax County Chamber of Commerce has always been an exceptional partner to FCPS. In the last several years, however, the Chamber has gone above and beyond expectations with their deep collaboration and programmatic support. In addition to working directly with FCPS to establish the foundation for Fairfax County Public Schools, our official charitable foundation, the Chamber continues to support the foundation with staff and resources. FCPS's Office of Business and Community Partnership and the Chamber also work closely to establish contacts and develop connections with community leaders and businesses. The Chamber works tirelessly to support FCPS workforce development programs through initiatives and educational programs, and leads the Vote Yes effort for the biannual school construction bond referendum. A strong promoter of FCPS, the Chamber often advocates to its members the value of that great schools bring to the business community, and we've absolutely seen that day in and day out, and the foundation is the latest example of that, but we are deeply appreciative of the Chamber's efforts. The Board recognizes the efforts of these three business partners and the dedication of their time and resources in support of the students, teachers, and a multiple of education programs in FCPS. The commitment and contributions of our business partners are crucial to the advancement of student achievement and learning in FCPS, and the Board extends its greatest appreciation and thanks to them. Thank you all very, very much. And if we can invite the board members to come down, we have some plaques and other things that we'd like to honor you with and recognize the work you've done on behalf of our students. Board members?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
You're really missing anything like this.
Where's my chairman? Mr. Moon, you should be over here.
Thank you. I'd like your picture.
Okay, everyone, look right here, please. Congratulations, Scott. Thank you.
Before I go to next recognition by Mr. Brian McElbin, is there any boys' couch or girls' couch in the audience? Someone in the back? Raise your hand. Okay, could you introduce yourself? In the middle? State your name and where you are from and what you are doing.
I am Time Warner. I am from, what's it called, a fairer country than I am. I'm here for the communication there.
Okay, thanks for being here. The next one? Okay, let's start from the gentleman in the corner. Okay, the next gentleman, what's your name?
Okay.
I'm Noel Walker.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And then? Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight. I also remember seeing a next-year student representative to the school board, Harris Latif. Are you still in the audience somewhere? Harris, would you like to stand to be recognized? Must be taking a break. All right, with that, Mr. McElbin.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. And this next recognition makes me very sad, but it is my pleasure on behalf of the school board to recognize Joanne Hammermaster, outgoing president and soon-to-be chairman of Real Food for Kids. Over the past several years, Joanne has built Real Food for Kids into a powerhouse organization that has helped FCPS become a national leader in promoting health, healthy and fresh food for students. What is most remarkable about Joanne is that she has always advocated in a positive and collaborative manner. She is truly a role model for effective advocacy. Although a hamstring injury has prevented her from running as much as she'd like, it hasn't prevented her from running Real Food for Kids in an effective and organized manner. Joanne and her family are moving to Georgia, but she will remain on the RFFK board and continue her good work. The first time I met Joanne was at a Food Day at Wolf Trap Elementary School in 2011, and it was then when I realized how truly powerful this woman was. Not only had she brought in a famous chef to help educate the students and community members, but she also had all the kids outfitted in color-coordinated shirts, a feat in and of itself. This past year at Holland Meadows Elementary School, we saw how quickly Food Day has expanded in only a few years, now including many different guest speakers and vendors, and yes, even more kids in color-coordinated shirts. As Food Day has expanded, so have other events sponsored by RFFK, including the annual Culinary Challenge event that features our Culinary Academy students. Joanne has provided support to FCPS as we formulated the concept for the new Pilot Kitchen and the Soda Pilot. She also helped with the Prismatic Study Recommendation to install fresh fruit and vegetable bars in all of our middle and high schools, and has helped explore ways to make better market our food. And who could forget, Joanne was with us throughout the quest for a healthier hamburger. Fond memories, all of these. All of this work has not gone unnoticed locally or nationally. Joanne has been recognized by the National PTA, and in February 2014, Joanne was invited to the White House and recognized by First Lady Michelle Obama for her work promoting health and wellness in Virginia. And not only that, the First Lady performed the Marshall High School Statesman Station rap, which was featured on national news that evening. This event highlighted the way Joanne has worked to include the student voice in all of our conversations about healthier food. In recognition of the countless hours Joanne has committed to Real Food for Kids and Fairfax County Public Schools, at PTA meetings, at school board meetings and work sessions, at late-night brainstorming sessions at her kitchen table, the school board is pleased to present her with a certificate of recognition. On behalf of the Fairfax County School Board, thank you, Joanne. And now I would like to invite Joanne and her husband and daughter up for some pictures, and then after they get a picture, we'll bring up all of RFFK and friends as well. Thank you.
All right, count three, one, two, three. Congratulations. Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution naming the Parklawn Elementary School Library, and let me call on Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my distinct honor and pleasure to offer this next resolution in honor of Susan Ackroyd. There are few people, I would say, anywhere, including here, that are more buoyant, more optimistic than Susan. Those, I hear people in the audience, yes, buoyant and optimistic, that is Susan Ackroyd.
Ms. Evans, you think we might want to invite her?
I guess, I'm sorry?
Invite her to stand next to her.
Oh, yes. Susan, would you please come up to the podium? Thank you. And anytime you go into Parklawn Elementary School, for the last 27 years, you've been able to see Susan's broad smile and her welcoming approach, as well as knowing that she was always focused on children and on the mission of that school. So, I want to thank you for all that you've put in, Susan, and I am going to read this resolution naming the Parklawn Elementary School Library after Susan G. Ackroyd. Whereas Susan G. Ackroyd has served Fairfax County Public Schools with dedication and excellence for 41 years, as the principal of Parklawn Elementary School for 27 of those 41 years, Ms. Ackroyd led the students, families, and staff of Parklawn Elementary School with integrity and distinction. And whereas Ms. Ackroyd understood the importance and value in educating the whole child, and she endeavored to provide students with opportunities outside of the classroom, including extracurricular programs that showcased her students' academic abilities, athletic skills, and performing arts talents. She recognized the importance of providing students with opportunities to meet their role models, and arranged for former First Lady Barbara Bush and First Lady Michelle Obama, among others, to visit Parklawn Elementary School. And whereas Ms. Ackroyd has devoted her life's work to providing service and guidance to others, she reached out to families in the Parklawn community and ensured that they were welcomed in the school, and felt supported in their goal for their students' education. She mentored numerous staff members, guiding them to recognize their potential and encouraging them to achieve success. And whereas Ms. Ackroyd's passion for reading and literacy was evident in her interactions with students and staff at Parklawn Elementary School, she would often read a book or share a poem of her own to open a staff meeting. She arranged for guest authors to read at the school, and she encouraged students to submit their own works for publication. Ms. Ackroyd enjoyed reading to students in the classroom and was always in costume for Dr. Seuss's birthday. And whereas, while serving at Parklawn Elementary School and in FCPS, Ms. Ackroyd demonstrated her strong work ethic, her love of literacy, and her commitment to education to thousands of children, families, and staff members every day. Her love for Parklawn Elementary School was evident by the countless hours she devoted to creating a caring environment within a beautiful school. Ms. Ackroyd's commitment to learning and her determination to see her students succeed was extraordinary. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board, in recognition of her dedicated service to the students, staff, and families of the Parklawn community, and her valuable contributions to Fairfax County Public Schools, hereby names the library at Parklawn Elementary School the Susan G. Ackroyd Library in her honor. I so move.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Reed. All those in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous with Mr. Eleanor Cofax absent.
Yes. Thank you so, thank you so much. I would ask now that family and friends come down for a photograph. I believe we have a number of Parklawn Elementary School people here, and in particular Assistant Principal Elizabeth Williams and Leslie Hassan, who was instrumental in putting together this recognition. So, thank you all for being here.
No, both members will come back, come back. We'll take one more picture. I guess doing twice is better than once, but Mrs. Reed, you don't have to repeat that. For the next one, we have recognition honoring Janice Miller from Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. Janice, would you please go to the lectern? I'm proud to read this recognition of Janice Miller. Tonight, on behalf of the Fairfax County School Board, it is my pleasure to recognize Janice Miller, who after 29 years of service, will retire from the City of Fairfax School Board at the end of this month. She is going somewhere else, and we'll talk about that a little later. Ms. Miller's distinguished record of service in the City of Fairfax Schools began in 1977, and she is the longest-serving School Board member in the history of City of Fairfax Schools. Ms. Miller is a dynamic leader of the Board and has served as both chairman and vice-chairman. She also has provided leadership to school bond committees that supported additions and renovations to four Fairfax City school facilities during her tenure. Having served as chairman of the Northeastern Region of the Virginia School Boards Association, and as a member of the VSBA Board of Directors, Ms. Miller extended her commitment to education beyond Fairfax City and advocated for City of Fairfax Schools at the state level. Ms. Miller advocated for bond referendums that funded a consolidation of the city's four elementary schools into two elementary schools, each with extensive and state-of-the-art renovations, renovated and expanded Lanier Middle School and Fairfax High School, and created a facilities planning committee that enabled city residents to participate in the development and planning of the projects. In 1979, the county and city school boards both approved a school services agreement, which included a requirement that the two boards meet annually, usually in December. For the past 34 years, that tradition has continued, and both boards look forward to their annual event. The relationships between members of the Fairfax County School Board and Ms. Miller have always been constructive and collaborative. Ms. Miller's leadership, service, and dedication to the students, teachers, administrators, and communities of the City of Fairfax Schools and Fairfax County have been greatly valued, and she will certainly be missed. She will especially be missed at our CPDC meetings, our boundary meetings, and at our work sessions, where she is always faithfully listening and knitting. We extend our deepest appreciation to her upon her retirement and wish her all the best as she takes on new challenges as a recently-elected member of the Fairfax City Council. I'd like to now present Ms. Miller with a token of appreciation from the board. I invite the board members to come with me. We'll do photographs, we'll ask for others to come up for pictures, and then I'll ask Janice if she'd like to make a few remarks. Please join me.
All right, everyone right here, count three, one, two, three. Again, thank you very much.
Mrs. Miller, I know that there are some board members who want to speak and make some remarks, so let me go to Ms. Smith first.
This is kind of a surreal experience. Janice's commitment to all of the kids of the city and to working well in a partnership with the Fairfax County Schools is unbelievable. Her leadership skills, how she works with people and brings them together, I do hope there's going to be a Vulcan mind meld, so somebody on the city board knows the contract as well as you do about our partnership. Janice, you are an excellent leader and so committed to kids and schools and to the staff and the buildings. It's been such a pleasure to work with you, and I know you'll do great work on the city council. Congratulations.
Thank you. Any other board member, Mrs. Strauss?
Yes, it has been an absolute pleasure to partner with you and with the board, and certainly in the years while, when you were renovating and consolidating your buildings in Fairfax. I don't know, Mr. Moon perhaps was with us at the time. What an amazing feat that was, that it was your leadership and bringing along the citizens of the City of Fairfax to understand the vision that you had, and to close schools, consolidate schools, and take on a huge bond debt to satisfy the needs of your students and your childrens. It was an amazing accomplishment that will serve the future children of the City of Fairfax for years and years and years, and it was you, Janice, who did that. Thank you.
Mr. Stone?
I would absolutely echo everything that's been said so far, but the thing I really want to know is, who got all those knitted items that you made? I mean, as a person who's always busy doing something, I mean, I deeply admired the fact that you had found a way to not only listen and listen intently and to really pull it all in and really engage all of us, but while you're doing that, your fingers are flying and you're actually creating a product that can be used beyond the heat and light that sometimes got generated, you actually had something that people could wear and use. I mean, I just, that I think describes you really in full with all the different things you've done and really the huge difference that you've made in the quality of schools and the facilities. I mean, we all deeply admire, and I remember that wasn't always pleasant, because I know there are a few boundary meetings that weren't so easy to do in the City of Fairfax. So again, my deepest thanks and appreciation, and we have all been well-served by your leadership. Thank you.
Yeah, Mrs. Miller, I didn't know that you started from 1977, your service on the school board. I was a little kid back then.
When I was very, very young.
But under your, something I was very envious, still to this day, you know, very envious about what the city school board, especially under your leadership, has provided to your schools, even though we teach all the Fairfax City students, is some extra program. That's such as Latin for your students, and I want to be able to sit down with the city board members sometime and discuss how you've been able to achieve that. But thank you for your service for so long, especially working with us.
Thank you.
With that, let me go to Mrs. Miller.
Mr. Moon, Chairman Moon, my good friend Kathy Smith, who is our representative from the Fairfax County School Board, the City of Fairfax Board members, Dr. Garza and staff. It is really, it is humbling to be honored by this board, by a group of people who are so interested and so dedicated to the children of this community. Over my 29 years as school board member, I have been fortunate to serve and to work with five amazing school superintendents and a number of staff members, numerous school board members. I've worked with six mayors and a number of city council members. And the reason why our schools have been able to accomplish much is because we have a wonderful team and we have a great partnership with people. As you all know, leadership and schools are all about relationships and partnerships. The relationship between the City of Fairfax and the Fairfax County School Board is an enduring relationship that dates back to the early 1960s. We actually are a model of efficiency in the Commonwealth of Virginia. There are J-LARC studies that are going on and have gone on that are looking at helping school divisions work together to provide the best possible services for its children, and we are that model. The relationship between the City of Fairfax School Board and the County School Board will help other jurisdictions in the state to work together to provide outstanding services at reasonable cost to all jurisdictions, and those services will serve the people that we know and love, our children. As I said, when we talk about relationships, we talk about relationships between board members, we talk about relationships with our funding bodies, with our parents, with our superintendent, our senior staff, our principals, our faculties, and most of all, we talk about our relationships with schools' own first responders. We have a lot of first responders in this country, and we frequently forget, the most important first responders in schools are our classroom teachers. And it's important that we build and that we do everything we can to honor and to serve and to help those classroom teachers be the best first responders for our children. Without those first responders, folks, and without all the people that I've mentioned, the work that we do or the work that we try to do will go undone. I feel that, someone said to me recently, "Well, why have you been doing this all these years?" And the simple reason is the wonderful boys and girls that we have in our schools. We, as board members, are lucky to greet kids back to school, at open houses, we read to them on Dr. Seuss Day, and we are fortunate enough to sit on the stage at graduation to watch the amazing young men and women who walk across our stage. And it is humbling and joyful, and quite frankly, amazing, to know that you are part of that process, of taking those boys, not taking, accepting those boys and girls from parents who bring them to our public schools and give us an opportunity to offer them a private school education in a public setting. Congratulations to all of you for allowing and for permitting me to be part of Fairfax County Public Schools through this unique relationship. I truly treasure the people you are and the work that you do. So thank you so much for honoring me this evening. I will always remember your friendship and your dedication to the people, young people, that we know and love. Thank you so much.
Next, we have a resolution honoring student representative, William Ash, from Ms. Heinz.
Thank you. Why, this is that time of year when it just seems like there are these very happy, very sad moments, right? We're full of pride, but also very sorry to see people go, and that's how I know we all feel about Will. In the time, you know, that Will has been with us, I think we've all seen just some incredible maturity. He has this wonderful mix of humility and wisdom, and I think humility is wisdom, and Will shows that a lot. You can't give him a compliment, and he doesn't turn it around and say, "Yeah, but so-and-so is really great," you know? That's what you always get from him, which is wonderful. Will is one of the many students in this county who make us look good, and Will gets to do that here into the cameras and on stage with us, but he makes the school board look good, he makes Fairfax County Public Schools look good. I know we owe a great deal to his family, and obviously, he's from an awesome family. We can tell that just from having spent time with you, Will. He's a model for other students and for us. I think our student representatives are always a model for us, a model of thoughtfulness and good behavior, always. And I just think we all need to watch for Will. He will be going down to my alma mater, UVA, and I know he's going to do great things down there, and we'll be waiting to see what happens afterwards, and you will come visit us, right? Well, I do have a resolution to read after all that. A resolution honoring William Will B. Ash. Whereas William B. Ash, a graduating senior at Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, has served with dedication and enthusiasm as the 43rd student representative to the Fairfax County School Board for the 2013-14 school year, and whereas, through his diligence and commitment, Will served as a tireless and enthusiastic advocate for FCPS students and worked to ensure that student concerns and perspectives were expressed to the school board. Will has been a significant source of ideas and information for student council representatives throughout FCPS, and whereas, Will has been a superior role model throughout his academic career by serving as a student representative to the school board, a Thomas Jefferson High School class council member, an executive committee publicity coordinator, a family life education curriculum advisory committee member, the recording secretary for the Student Advisory Council, a member of the Shakespeare Troop, a member of National Honor Society, and a varsity swimming scholar athlete, and in his spare time. Whereas, Will readily shares his time, energy, and leadership skills with his community. He is an active participant in the Boy Scouts of America and completed the requirements necessary to attain Eagle Scout designation. And whereas, Will's successes inside and outside the classroom contributed to his being selected as an incoming University of Virginia Jefferson Scholar, a coveted scholarship awarded only to those few students who have demonstrated excellence and exceptional potential in the areas of leadership, scholarship, and citizenship. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board acknowledges the exceptional service of William B. Ash from July 1, 2013, through June 30, 2014, expresses its genuine appreciation for all of his accomplishments, and extends its sincere wishes for his continued success at the University of Virginia. I so move.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Evans, all those in favor, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous with Ms. Schur and Mr. Narkofax absent. Congratulations.
We do have some little things for you to take with you, some memento of your time here. So if I could invite Will's family to come down, family and friends, whoever is here for Will, to come forward, we'll do a picture with the board and present a plaque and a resolution.
Congratulations, Will.
Thank you.
So before we have, Will give us a departing words of wisdom to our little grown-ups. Let's see whether both members have any comments. Mrs. Strauss.
Bill, thank you very much for sharing your wisdom with us. You represented the students of Fairfax County extremely well, which was your job. And there were times when you had better ideas than we did, which was why we treasured your time with us. Congratulations. I know that you have an important job next year at UVA and will be one of the outstanding scholars. So, if there are times when you need to share more ideas with us and get us corrected and going in a better direction, please let us know. We are very grateful and we definitely respect you and your ideas. And thank you very much to your family for sharing you with us. Good luck.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
Will, it has been a true pleasure to spend this year with you. Watching you grow here at the table and become comfortable in sharing your extremely valuable perspective with all of us and with the public. It has truly helped strengthen our schools this year, once again. You embody the very thing that we hope for all of our children in Fairfax County Public Schools. You have not only the intellect, but you have the commitment to trying to do good and to really give of yourself and to be a scholar athlete at one of the premier magnet high schools in the nation. And through all of that, you always arrived with a smile and a commitment and truly demonstrated a passion and enjoyment of what you were doing. And I know it inspired me and so many of my colleagues for the energy and enthusiasm you brought. Without question, we are going to miss you dearly. And I can only ask that you please come back and visit us during your visits home from UVA. But please know, for myself and so many of us, we are so incredibly proud of you. And we are honored that you are going on to UVA because you will continue to make that an incredible institution as well. Best of luck to you, Will.
One, Ms. Evans.
Will, I just want to say that you have done an excellent job on this board and you have been a full-fledged member of this board. I want to say you have both the head for it and the heart for it. And that's, both are very important when you're representing all of the students in Fairfax County. Your comments were always very thoughtful. They were also concise, which of course, we appreciate very much as well. You have already made a big difference in this world. And I know you're going to make a bigger difference wherever you go next. So, thank you for everything you have done for Fairfax County and for the students of Fairfax County. And please come back and visit. We will miss you tremendously. Thank you.
Dr. Garza.
Yes, I'll be brief. Oh, my goodness, Will. We're going to miss you so much. I guess I could summarize my reaction and my feelings about you by saying you're just wise beyond your years. You know, you were always, and I really like the way you put that. He did contribute as a member, full acting member of this board, was never, always very courageous, never fearful of weighing in and providing your insight and wisdom. Very thoughtful and oftentimes, kind of the voice of reason, you know? The student voice, which is so important in so many of the conversations and deliberations that we had underway. I just know your parents. I know they have to be very, very proud. We are so proud of you and know that your impact on the system has been great because you've had a major mark. But you've got wonderful things ahead of you. You're going to do great things. And we will always watch from afar and be very, very proud. So, thank you, Will.
Mr. McElvin, to be followed by Mr. Stork.
So, Mr. Ash, first of all, great haircut. I really like it. Most importantly, thank you for being so much more mature than all of us up here, especially Mr. Moon. We are so excited that you're not going too far away to UVA. So, we know you'll be coming back to visit us. And for those of you who don't know what the Jefferson Scholarship is, it is a full ride for four years at UVA. And it's the highest honor anyone can get going to UVA. So, we're also very proud of you. So, we're going to miss you, Will.
Mr. Stork.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. And, well, we've sure been, had a lot of enjoyment sitting next to each other and sharing kind of different perspectives of people who have spoken or not spoken, maybe as part of that. And I share really the comments that I made earlier. I'm going to just pick one piece of it and smile a bit as I'm saying it. I've got a chance to watch the evolution in your eating habits over the last nine months. And I think, you know, the fact that we've done this whole year of talking about healthy food and healthy living and what you consume. And he started with, as you might imagine, you know, like two or three cans of Coke, you know, and obviously, all the M&amp;M's and lots of other things related to that. And now, he's kind of boiled it down to water and usually something relatively healthy that he's eating. So, I mean, there's education that's happened in lots of different directions. And I think you'll particularly be benefit from that, particularly as you get to next year where you're eating grilled cheese and pot pies or something, which is probably what you'll be doing as a freshman. But my pleasure being your seat partner. And it's been a pleasure and look forward to seeing you in the future and seeing how you progress. Thank you.
And then, Mr. McElvin. Mr. Ash is not only more mature than I am, but he is much more handsome. That's the key part. Mr. Ash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, thanks to Mr. Stork for constantly reminding me to drink another bottle of water and one less can of Coke. Wow, I can't believe it's already been one year. Seems like just yesterday, I was sitting at the summer retreat in that circle, wondering what my job really was, why I was there, when it was socially acceptable to get up and get food to eat. But a year has passed and quite a bit has happened. And I've learned when it's socially acceptable to get food. Anytime, really. I've enjoyed meeting with students at SAC, brainstorming with board members, and organizing student committees to tackle issues. And then stepping back to watch them take the idea and run with it and then me getting to take some of the credit for it. It's a great idea. I've learned quite a bit. Most notably, I've learned that one can't possibly handle a position of representation alone. We have support staff and advisory committee members to focus on the details that we can't. Took me four months to realize this, but I finally did. In addition, it's a lot easier to come up with ideas in a group rather than individually. I've also had the chance to observe the board and the school system. And after a year, I've developed some opinions of my own on the state of current affairs, which I've expressed over the past few meetings. I've discussed many of the issues facing our schools, such as how we want to impact our students and the skills we want them to have, cultivating all passions, both the arts and the sciences, technology in the classroom and the equity issues that arise from technology. And finally, two very important topics. The first is the achievement gap, which retired administrator Leslie Butts highlighted as the biggest challenge facing the county as she was being honored during the second school board meeting of the year. This really stuck with me and I've thought about it over and over. And it just stuck in my mind as it really is one of the biggest issues we as a board and we as a system and we as a country really need to tackle. We need to figure out how to get everyone on the same playing field. I've been blessed with a wealth of opportunities, which I've tried my best to take advantage of. But many students do not even have a chance at getting these opportunities. This starts with the fact that I went to preschool and had parents who value education very highly. A significant portion of students in this county do not get those opportunities. And from the first day of kindergarten, they're catching up. We need to keep working on new strategies to raise the bar for all students while not holding back our high achievers. Again, raising the bar, not lowering it. As a system, we can always improve and we must. There is no secret solution around a corner, some magical thing that will magically make the problem go away. It will only come with continued dedication and hard work. The second issue is mental wellness. We're a system aimed at educating youth. And in a high-stress area like Northern Virginia, that includes goals for personal wellness and mental health. FCPS is not the sole cause of severe student stress and likely not the primary. But we contribute. And we also have the power to change the community. Change will come slowly. But if we keep working as a system and a community, we can make a difference in our students' lives and even save them. It's a lofty goal, but certainly a worthy one. These are just two of the concerns that I've identified and I really want to leave behind and especially pass on to Harris as he takes over. As my time here wraps up, I'd like to thank all the people who have helped me along the way. My parents, who have supported me from day one. All the teachers who have taught me lessons and kept me in line. The students and faculty involved with TJ's Student Government Association, who really fostered my love for student government and really got me passionate about these issues. Keegan Cotton, the former student representative to the school board, and Dr. Liz Payne, the chairman of the FLE Curriculum Advisory Committee, who got me involved in county work and taught me the value of how many people you can impact. Of course, the school board office, specifically Mrs. Goddard, Mrs. Rhodes, Mrs. Torres-Barthel, and my lovely executive assistant, Ms. Montano, for always supporting and checking up on me. And finally, the school board, the superintendent, and the leadership team for working with me over the past 12 months and really treating me like an equal. I've enjoyed my time and I look forward to watching, from Charlottesville, watching Harris do a fantastic job with the position. The opinion of the students is in good hands. One last thank you to last year's SAC, who gave me the opportunity, which I have enjoyed immensely and will treasure and remember for years to come. Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution honoring Terry Breeden from Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you very much. I am excited to read this resolution honoring Terry Breeden. And Terry, you've already anticipated that you needed to come to the front. Follow directions. Before I began, I have so enjoyed working with you for the last eight years. And the thing that always was fun is that when you would present a report or some long thing to the school board, it was always the teacher trying to engage your students with something a little more creative, a little more pizzazz, multi-sensory. Mickey Rooney and Judy Garland, let's put on a show. I would have gone with you back to those days. We would have put on great Hollywood movies. So, thank you for that spirit and always talking as a teacher. So, it is indeed my honor to present this resolution honoring Terry L. Breeden. Whereas, Dr. Terry Breeden has served Fairfax County Public Schools for eight years with distinction, first as Assistant Superintendent of Professional Learning and Training, and then as Assistant Superintendent of Professional Learning and Accountability. And Terry is going on to become the Assistant Superintendent for Instruction in Loudoun County. So, there we go. Whereas, Dr. Breeden led Fairfax County Public Schools in the implementation of division-wide professional learning communities, which assisted in improving collaboration, supporting student achievement, and providing more effective and efficient practices. And whereas, she guided the development of two online data systems, MyPLT, which provides an electronic database of professional development opportunities in FCPS, and the Command Center, which provides online documentation and access to all SOL data. And whereas, Dr. Breeden integrated the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development Test for Schools, known as PISA, into FCPS operations and provided staff the opportunity to benchmark FCPS achievement as compared to top-ranked schools in the United States as well as internationally. And whereas, she has secured over $1 million in grant funding from Apple Federal Credit Union Education Foundation to support the Great Beginnings New Teacher Induction Program. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County Board extends its highest commendation and deepest appreciation to Dr. Terry Breeden for her dedication to public education and enthusiastic support of the success of the students, teachers, and administrators in Fairfax County Public Schools. I so move.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Velkoff. All those in favor, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous with Mrs. Schurz and Mr. Velkoff ex-absent.
Thank you. And Dr. Breeden, if you and your family and colleagues would come for a picture, please. Well, I don't want to...
I know that Dr. Breeden has prepared something literally creative for us to enjoy as a part of her remarks. But before we get to that, I know that there are both members who want to say a few words.
You can address her as Judy Garland, too, please.
Okay, all right. Mrs. Heinz to be followed by Mr. Velkoff and Dr. Garza. Mrs. Heinz.
Thank you, okay. Well, again, we have to say goodbye. But you and I will not be far from each other because I'm working in Loudoun. So, now I will have an important friend in the administration. I'll try not to abuse that, but...
Use it anytime you want.
Terry, I just, it is hard to see you go. You know, one of the things that I've found with staff in FCPS is, you know, you ask for a meeting just to ask some questions. And boy, you get a presentation, you know? You get a meeting, not just one person. There's a few people and there are reports and there might be a PowerPoint, you know? And I think you took that to the nth. Every time I asked for a meeting to ask you a question, I felt like I had half of your department in there helping me understand something and reams of data and information, not just data, but information, good information, that really, I felt like you always went well above and beyond whatever it was I needed to learn. And I needed to learn a lot because I'm one of the newbies still, you know? So, you've been a huge part of my time here and my understanding. The work that you've done for the school system has been some of the critical stuff, you know? That we have questions about student achievement, teacher development. I mean, it's really, it's the nuts and bolts in a lot of ways of what we do. So, and I also think, I've always been impressed by your creativity. And Mrs. Strauss talked a little bit about how that comes out in meetings. And it's fun. But I think you also, you turn that creativity to the work as well. I mean, I think the Passages Report was, you know, came from you. And I, that, when I first saw that... There's some controversy perhaps here, but I loved it, and I think it's going to be extremely valuable in certain settings through the county, like with our business leaders who we honored earlier. I think when they have something like that in their hands to show folks who are considering coming to Fairfax County, I think it's a very powerful document. And lastly, you and I share an Ohio heritage, and so I'm just going to say on behalf of the two Buckeyes here, go Buckeyes, and we wish you the best.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Terry. I, too, was going to talk about the impactful work that you've done in the system and how that work will continue to have very positive impact on the future direction of the system. I think Passages is one I was going to bring up. I'm glad others have talked about it, but I really think that that was your vision, that was your idea, and I believe that that is really going to set the stage for our work moving forward. Your fingerprints will long be on that work. The PLC work around collaborative teams, when people talk about work in our system that they're most proud of, they will often say it's the collaborative, the collaborative learning teams, which is based upon a PLC model. You are instrumental in getting that done in our system. The PISA, we're very, very proud of that work. Again, I think it's going to set the stage for looking differently at assessment. And then finally, the highest compliment I can give anyone is you are the consummate teacher. And I think other people have referred to that, and that's why you're so good at handling difficult issues, helping people understand complex issues, and that's that teacher in you that always comes out, and that's the highest praise I can give. So, we wish you the best in Loudoun. I'm actually anticipating, I can't wait to see what's next, because Terry is a very innovative, and I can't wait to see what you have here, here in just a little bit. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you. I have a Mrs. Smith to be followed by Mr. McElveen and Ms. Evans.
So, I think we all have this theme about your ability as a teacher. Must be that middle-school math-type thing there. Because you were always able to, I think, watch the board members' faces and make sure that you presented the data in a way that we were going to understand it, because it's not always the easiest thing to understand when we get to some of the technical reports. I remember I first met you way back in 2006, and your commitment to the system, to really trying to move us forward so we're aware of what's happening with all the kids and helping them achieve, and your style. I mean, that's my regret, I never said, "Terry, help me with my style." I'm happy you're still going to be close by, and I truly appreciate your commitment that you had here when you were with all of us. Thank you.
Mr. McElveen.
Thank you, Terry. You were responsible for what I think were the two most powerful presentations that this board receives every year, and that was the PISA presentation and the Passages presentation. You truly led us in a new direction with PISA, and I'm sad to see you going, just as we've expanded it to all of our schools, but I'm sure you will talk about that as well. I also enjoyed serving with you on a very downtrodden group called the Alumni Networking Group, and unfortunately, those recommendations haven't been implemented, but they will be at some point, I'm sure. But, you know, when it came to things like brainstorming about an alumni association for Fairfax County in the future, I think that's where we're going, and we look to you for advice on that. And one last piece of advice, if you thought this school board was tough, good luck in Loudoun.
Ms. Evans is the last one.
Thank you. I'll try not to repeat what others have said. I'll just say that I so appreciate the tremendous amount of substantive work you have taken on in your time here in FCPS. You know, whenever you were presenting at a work session, the list of the projects just went on and on and on and on, and it showed us the incredible breadth and depth of your work here. So, I'm glad you're close by, and I wish you well, and please do keep in touch. Congratulations, and thank you for all your service.
Well, you know, I think you need one more lesson. So, I have prepared something here that I think will let me thank those who've helped me. If you know about Gallup's work with Strength Finders, you all know what your strengths are and what's good about your strengths and bad about your strengths. I always tell everyone, one of my strengths is belief, and that one can get you in trouble or it can keep you from abusing substances, but you have to be very careful with belief. But another work from Gallup is work called Vital Friends that speaks about relationships, and it says that relationships are critical. And one of the things, because I was over accountability, I feel like I have to bring some research into this, and research says that if you have at least four friends, you will live significantly longer. Well, I've always had a lot of friends when I, you know, established myself in a community, but when I came here, I ran into a little bit of a friend problem. And let me tell you about it. When we came, as some of you mentioned, back in 2006, we had about 30 minutes to find a place to live, and with that, and we found a place down on Nutley, which worked out just fine because they took pets. I have been looking for eight years for a find-a-way to bring my dog into the school board meeting, and I have finally found it. When I went into the apartment complex, they handed me what looked like a student emergency card, and they said, "You need to fill this out." And I looked down there, and it said, "Local number." And I said, "Oh, I'm so sorry, I've just been here 30 minutes, and I have not made any friends or anything. Do you mind if I put down my brother who lives in California?" And they said, "Oh, no, no, it must be a local person." I got nothing, nothing. So, I stood there, and I thought about it for a few minutes, and I said, "Well, why do you need this number?" Because I thought about putting down like 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. And they said, "Well, if you don't come home, someone will come get your dog." And I told them, I said, "Wait a minute, if I don't come home, there are bigger problems than missing my dog." But one of the things that was kind of sad about that day is I really didn't have any friends, but I did come up with an answer. And you said I was creative. Well, here's an example. I thought, okay, I got to do something here. I wrote, "Jack D. Dale, 5714231010." So, I've always laughed and told Dr. Dale, "You were on my dog's emergency card." He said he would go get her if something happened to me, so I think it was, it worked out just fine. But one of the things that the book deals with is should you have friends at work? And I know some of you are, were raised in the same time I was, and we were kind of discouraged from having friends at work, but the book says that is fine. And just to remember some of the great friendship opportunities we had, I found this picture on my computer today, and you all remember this exciting event between the school board and the leadership team. I believe that's the winning team up there, if I recall. You know, I've got, I don't have data to support this, but I just think, as I recall, we won everything.
I disagree.
And I was worried about a couple of you because you probably still have injuries to prove that you can't have friendship opportunities at work. But also, historically, we know that it's good to find friends at work, and we think of these two men and the liberty that we have due to their wonderful friendship on the job. So, tonight, I want to thank my friends. I first want to thank my husband, Frank. I want you to know that this is his first board meeting, and he is very impressed. I also want to thank Dan, Mr. Moon, Janie, and Kathy for being on the original school board meeting that allowed me to have this position, and then the other members that I work with every day now. I also want to thank all the PLAers, official and unofficial, that are in the audience tonight. And also, I put this picture up here, the students, the teachers, and all the employees. So, thank you very much. But as I was listening to the, yes, the Boy Scouts are still here, I remembered what I learned as a campfire girl. Now, was anybody else a campfire girl? Yeah, okay. It's now called the campfire because it's boys and girls. But anyway, we had camp songs. And the other day, when I was thinking about establishing relationships in Loudoun County, and the person that I'm replacing has worked for Loudoun County for 44 years. How do you step into such a role where someone has such a legacy? But this song that I learned as a bluebird in third grade went through my mind, and I would like to share 45 seconds of a song that I've been thinking about. And Yvette will help me. I think, click on Girl Scout Song, I think it's up there. If not, we may have to sing, and that would be...
Now, I feel bad for Jim Kaker, because he's going to have to top that. I have a resolution honoring James J. Kaker. Since I'll be reading the resolution, I'm going to be turning my gavel over to last Okay, Mr. Moon. Thank you, Ms. Hines. Before I read the actual resolution, I have a few things to say about you, Mr. Kaker. It's only three pages. This is a tough one. It is hard to say goodbye to a gentleman who has been both a personal friend and a colleague and advisor in the educational field. I guess we took from Texas, and now we have to give back to Texas. Texas demands overdue, and I have learned that you don't mess with the Texas. Looking at you, Dr. Garza. Jim, we are going to miss you, plain and simple. Payful love, working with you. You set high expectations and expect them to be met. You focus on the positive and don't let any negativity seep in. On Shantilly High School, your staff was whining about a new initiative, so you just walked out of the meeting. People in the room looked at each other and said, "We've been cakerled." They knew. By the way, I'm looking up that verb in my Korean dictionary. You are a great leader and teacher, and you always provide inspirational videos at the principals' meetings to back up what you are saying. Of course, the videos never work, but at least you follow with a link. You remember that. You are a collaborative by nature and want to share what you've learned. You are an excellent mentor and have worked in the role with the students, teachers, and fellow assistant superintendents. As a high school principal, you provide strong leadership, had good rapport with the staff and students. While you were at Shantilly High School, Shantilly was my go-to high school. Whenever I had a group of educators who wanted to visit a good high school in Fairfax County, I knew that I could kind of count on you to show the visitors what excellent Fairfax County public high schools were all about. As a Cluster Assistant Superintendent, you look for long-term solutions and lead with the strength and collaboration. You excel at building relationship, and we all have observed that skill over and over again. My fondest memory of you is, of course, when you, Peter Noonan, and I traveled together to Korea a few years ago, when we were all invited by a school district there to make presentations. Don't worry, I will not go into detail of all that we did together, or even the escapades that you did just on your own. But let me just tell you that that was one of the most memorable trips of my life, and thank you for trying your chopsticks, getting up before 6:00 a.m. and walking endlessly with me every morning while we were there. Jim, we thank you for your many years of inspiration, laughter, and leadership. We wish you the very best as you head west back home. Please keep in touch. And I have a resolution to read. May I have Mr. Kaker to stand next to the left? I should have done that from the beginning. Resolution honoring James J. Kaker. We are that James J. Kaker has served Fairfax County Public Schools for 14 years with excellence and dedication. Throughout his career with FCPS, Mr. Kaker has effectively represented and served the interests of students, schools, and diverse communities in a variety of positions, including Assistant Principal at George G. Marshall High School, as Assistant Principal at Thomas Jefferson High School, Science and Technology, Principal at Shantilly High School, and for the last three years as Cluster Two Assistant Superintendent. And whereas during his tenure at Shantilly High School, Mr. Kaker worked collaboratively with the staff to establish a professional learning community and to create a school culture that focused on results and emphasized achievement for each member of the school community. While under his leadership, Shantilly High School received the Governor's Award for Educational Excellence for three years and was awarded the VHSW Wacobiya Cup for Academics Four Times. And whereas as Cluster Two Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Kaker developed an institutional program that joined schools that faced similar challenges and provided teachers and principals the time to collaborate, exchange ideas, and share strength to improve and expand their individual instructional programs. Mr. Kaker supported the development of leadership among his staff and mentored 12 principals, many of whom were nominated for Principal of the Year and Outstanding First-Year Principal, including 2014 FCPS Principal of the Year. And whereas Mr. Kaker's thoughtful leadership of Cluster Two and his professional dedication to FCPS encouraged teachers, administrators, and educational personnel to build strong pyramid-wide relationship, to strive for excellence in the classroom, to focus on the power of professional learning communities, and to strengthen vertical articulation resulting in improved student achievement for schools in Cluster Two. Whereas Mr. Kaker consistently built positive... including 2014 FCPS Principal of the Year. And whereas, Mr. Caker's thoughtful leadership of Cluster Two and his professional dedication to FCPS encouraged teachers, administrators, and educational personnel to build strong pyramid-wide relationship, to strive for excellence in the classroom, to focus on the power of professional learning communities, and to strengthen vertical articulation resulting in improved student achievement for schools in Cluster Two. Whereas, Mr. Caker consistently built positive relationship in FCPS and Cluster Two with the school leaders, teachers, and parents, and created a sensible community with the end result focused on creating and sustaining the best learning environment possible for all students. Now therefore, be resolved that the Fairfax County School Board extends its highest commendation and deepest appreciation to Mr. James J. Caker for his inspirational leadership and outstanding service to Fairfax County Public Schools, and for his unwavering dedication to students, teachers, administrators, and the community. I so move.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Evans. All those in favor, raise your hand. It is unanimous.
So could I invite Mr. Caker and his family members to join us, join the board members? I'll be presenting the resolution and some nice gift here. So Ms. Hines, could I get my gavel back?
Well, all right.
Thank you. Before we let Mr. Caker deliver just a speech, could I ask Mrs. Strauss and Ms. Evans?
Jim, thank you very much. I first knew you as a principal at Shantilly High School, and I admired you there, and you put up with all of us in theater and Ed Monk, which was great. You were forever part of your office. And I very much enjoyed our relationship as our Cluster Two Assistant Superintendent. You helped us through a lot of decision points. They were not always easy, but you were wise and helped us all come to the best resolution working with us, with our students, and with our parents. So, thank you very much. And I know Texas will be happy to have you, but we'll be sorry to see you go. Thank you.
I have, Ms. Evans, to be followed by Mr. Welkham, Mrs. Freed, and Ms. Hines.
Oh, Jim, I just want to say that, you know, it was such a pleasure getting to know you as a Cluster Assistant Superintendent for Cluster Two. And I fondly remember our phone calls to talk about the schools that we shared and your good humor. And I guess what I'll particularly remember is your ability to take an idea and put it into reality, you know, and that's a unique talent. So I will, will miss that, and I will, will miss you and our conversations. So I just want to thank you so much for everything that you've done as Cluster Assistant Superintendent, and all the best to you and your family in Texas.
Thank you.
Mr. Welkham?
So Jim, we met in 2006 in the summertime, and I was new as the treasurer of Shantilly High School, PTSA, and you were in your second or third year as principal there. I would never, never have guessed at that time that you and I would both be here tonight. I've always admired you as an innovator and as someone that I could go to to hear the unvarnished truth. And you've been a big, big help for me. Certainly, at Shantilly High School, you've left behind a great school that is, continues to be on an upward trajectory, and it's a great legacy. Something you might not remember is that after my first year as the president of the PTSA at Shantilly, we met to kind of have a little retrospective about the year in your office. And you gave me a reading assignment. It was The Global Achievement Gap by Tony Wagner. And I just read through that book and, and learned so much. And it, I'll say, it captured all of my fears about education in the country and in the school system, but it also captured all of my hopes and dreams. And I attribute that to you. Then later that summer, I went to a PTA conference, and Mrs. Smith and Pat Russo, the superintendent, had a conference for PTA leaders. And so I stood up and I said, "Okay." So I read The Global Achievement Gap. I've drunk the Kool-Aid, so what do we need to do? And Pat Russo said, "Well, people, all of you, all of you PTA leaders, parents, you need to go and lobby the politicians because the world isn't gonna change until the people start speaking out." And that was something that I took to heart. And again, the thread goes back to the inspiration and leadership that you gave me. So I just want to thank you for all of your service, and you've been a big inspiration to me and a, and a great friend. I'm certainly gonna miss you. And I'm gonna close with one final thought. You know, in baseball, sometimes a player gets traded for a player to be named later. So last year, we brought Karen Garza from Texas, which means you must be, no, never mind.
Mrs. Freed?
Thank you, Chairman Moon. Well, in the past couple of years, I've worked very closely with you, Jim. And as I was reflecting on it, there were a lot of contentious meetings that we were in the middle of, but you handled them all with diplomacy. And you really listened to people, whether it was a principal who was upset about a facility issue, whether it was a room full of parents that were angry about proposed boundary changes. You, or people who were coming to hear about principal selection and very anxious about the changes. In all of those cases, I felt that you took a real pulse of the room, and you were very empathetic and understanding with what people were feeling and what their doubts and their questions were, and you really tried to address those. And I really admired the way, in particular, when there was some very contentious situations that you just tried to address things with, with fact. You didn't get upset. And I think that's just a wonderful skill that you have. And then there's the creativity part that I've also been able to see. I remember when we were talking a couple of years ago about the boundary process, and it seemed like, gosh, you know, for some cases, it doesn't have to be this huge, long, you know, a year and a half boundary process. Isn't there another way? And that's when we came up with what we fondly now call Boundary Light, and that was Dear Baby. And, and we did that, and it was successful. And so whenever I hear that term, I will always think of you because, like someone else said, it was an idea, but you actually made it happen. So I very much appreciate that. I'm going to miss our Cluster Two meetings with all the, the parents who come in representing the PTAs. I felt that that was a very proactive and constructive and a very, just a very calm way to discuss issues. You know, I really, I know that all the parents really looked forward to that, and that was really a wonderful thing that you did. And I don't know if anyone else does that, but, but we did it, and it was great because of Jim. And last but not least, you know, your love of the outdoors and your love of Alaska and the West, and now I know going back to Texas. We're very, very happy for your family. We're going to miss you though, and I personally will miss you very much. But next time I have a contentious issue, can I call you?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I have, Ms. Hines, to be followed by Dr. Garza.
Yeah, well, Patty and I, you know, have shared the schools that you, so we've, we've both been in the room in some of those meetings, you know, and so I'll echo everything she just said. But I just, you know, you've been a principal, you've been a leader of principals, and I think that's been a great resource for me in working with you. But also, as a parent, you've been a great resource. I, I really looked forward to sitting in that office and just chatting with you over that table about anything. I felt like you were always open and honest, willing to talk about instruction. You know, I had questions about our elementary instruction. And since you, as a parent, were going through some of that, you were able to help me tremendously. And to combine that with your experience as a principal, I, and I, and I knew I could get sort of the, the straight information from you, and it would help me out tremendously. So just your accessibility, your honesty, your flexibility, I feel like you have to be very flexible to be in that Cluster Assistant Superintendent office, and, and you were. And I just always felt like that came from your, your full heart for kids and for teachers, you know, how you just, you embrace the, the work and the people who are doing the work every day, even though you're in that shiny building in an office. And I, I'm glad for Texas that you're gonna go back and be back in a school. I think they are very fortunate to have you. You have a, a new spring in your step and a smile on your face, and I can see that you're looking forward to it too. They, they are very lucky to have you. It's our loss, but, but I'm very happy for you. Thank you for everything.
Dr. Garza?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jim, my goodness, congratulations on kind of this new step in your life. I'll tell you that my observations of Jim very early on was he serves his, his Clusters and his Cluster Two schools so well. And he has the trust and admiration and respect of the principals and the parents, teachers in that cluster because you were so supportive in just every, all these complex issues you all brought up earlier. But even beyond that, Jim's a learner. He's an instructional leader. He's got, he demonstrates a lot of depth, understanding around those issues. And the thing that I really have admired about Jim is in our leadership team meetings, and I speak for all of the team over here, you know, we would deal with just really complex, tough issues, and Jim would always have something very thoughtful and insightful that just, he said it just at the right time, that managed to move the conversation forward. So your voice, leadership at the table is gonna be very much missed, but you'll do so well in Conroe, and good for them, and good luck to all of your family. I told them all that they're gonna, before long, start talking like me. And then finally, we always kid Jim that he's a snappy dresser. But he is a great leader and will continue to have a lot of impact on children. And finally, it would be the last thing I would say about him, is he never lost sight of what we're here and why we're here, and would always bring that to the table, that children first. So Jim will miss you, and thank you for all your service, and you've had just a tremendous impact here.
Thank you very much.
So tell us what you have in your iPad.
Okay, well, I'm glad I brought it because I don't have a presentation. And it is my iPad. I had to go buy one because I've gotta give everything back to the school system now that I'm leaving, right? But it's great to be here tonight. Chairman Moon, members of the board, Dr. Garza, colleagues on the leadership team. You know, it's, it's great to hear these things said about me. I'm so happy that my family is here because they don't know that person. Yeah, I'm a tough guy at home with lots of rules and responsibilities for everybody, but I love them dearly. And, you know, we came here in 2000, a very young family. Sean was four, Ryan was one, and Marie and I were excited about the opportunity, but also a little leery of coming to a new place and the challenges that relocation brings you. Fourteen years later, Sean graduated last week from high school. He's going to UT, you heard that. Ryan's gonna be a sophomore, and we're not such a young family anymore. My hair used to be black, and there used to be a lot more of it. But it's been terrific. And, you know, one of the things that I'm so grateful for is the employees of the school system. When I came into the system, I was looking for a job, and there was a courageous leader that offered me a position, and that was Leslie Butts. And we heard her name earlier tonight, and she took a chance on me, and it worked out well for me. Now, knowing what I know now about leadership in Fairfax County, we don't take a lot of chances on outsiders because we grow our own, and we grow them well, and it means opportunity for people in the system. And I certainly understand that. But I would encourage you to be wise in thinking big and looking at others because sometimes you land something good, and it does make a difference. One of the people that's been so instrumental in my career in Fairfax is one of those people that's passionate about leadership development. And I don't think I see her over there right now, but it's Phyllis Pajardo. And Phyllis crossed my path early on with Leslie. There she is in the back. I get to embarrass her now because the other night at the honor ceremony, she called me out, and I wasn't expecting it, but it was wonderful, and thank you again for that, Phyllis. But Phyllis just has a passion for developing the great strengths of others, and she's done that work for a long time. And in her role now, she has more responsibility and capability to drive that mission than she's ever had before. And so I'm, I'm very appreciative of everything that she's done to support me along the way and help me. As we prepare to return to Houston, I'm reminded of a quote I read on a Sunday morning a long time ago in the Houston Chronicle. "I was an inexperienced history teacher at the time in a challenging school with plenty of struggling students." The article was about a veteran Houston teacher that had dedicated her life to serving children. What she said sticks with me to this day. Excuses are the worn-out tools of sculptors building monuments of nothing. That wisdom prompts me to offer this statement. We have allowed our capacity to recognize the need for change focused on the work of collaborative teams and collaborative practice in our schools to take on the characteristics of resistance to change that inhibits the progress that is the outcome of the process. When as leaders do we stand tall and make decisions out of courage and not out of fear? A former FCPS leader, mentor, and another great woman, Ann Monday, shared that wisdom with a group of aspiring principals not long after I joined the school system. Those thoughtful words resonated with me then and have been with me ever since. I've used them and that logic to summon the courage needed when hard choices had to be made, and knowing that guiding principle will always serve me well. As you walk through the challenges and the opportunities of strategic planning, portrait of a graduate, shrinking budgets, a reorganization, and the organization, be courageous. Stay the course and stay focused to prevent the noise that is inevitable to become the distraction that undermines the potential for greatness that is the work of a leader. Jim Collins reminds us that getting from good to great has a lot to do with the people. We are the people, we are in the people business, and certainly some of the best people I've ever had the privilege to work with are right here in our schools and in our support centers. Great teachers make great schools that produce great outcomes. From Socrates and Aristotle to our own Melissa Porforio, great teaching is great teaching. It starts with a great teacher that inspires a love of learning in each and every pupil. While we have moved from recording our best thinking on stone tablets to electronic devices that mirror that image, the intellectual effort needed to produce that result has not changed. Education is hard work that, when done well, is its own reward. I wish you continued success as a learning organization and the lighthouse you've become as I take my next step in my learning journey and return to the principalship at York Junior High in Conroe, Texas. I hope we can stay connected and in doing so, continue learning from one another. Thank you Fairfax Public County Public Schools for fourteen wonderful years.
Next title of business is FCPS Excellence Awards and Lamy. Let me call on Dr. Garza.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jim, you really set the stage for this next section because it really is about great people all throughout this organization who give so much to... In service to our children, and I thought you set that stage very well. So the next thing on the agenda, along with Dr. Pajardo, who was acknowledged earlier, and her wonderful team, we will honor the winners of our individual and collaborative team excellence awards, which also Jim acknowledged. These awards celebrate the efforts and achievements of employees whose job performance produces exceptional results supporting the FCPS mission and vision. By using nomination categories based on the school system's goals, we can recognize multiple pathways to results. So the award categories are: Impact, Student Achievement, Community Engagement, and Growth. Out of the 102 nominees, eight individuals and 65 team members were chosen for awards. And they are here tonight with friends and family so we can recognize their outstanding work. This has been a fun week because we've also had a lot of other recognitions. It's been really exciting to acknowledge so many great FCPS people. So now, let's present the awards. So we'll bring the winners up based upon the award category. Once we have all the individuals and teams from that category assembled, and we'll follow Dr. Pajardo's guidance, we will take that group photo. So if you would, let me introduce you now to Dr. Phyllis Pajardo, who will... Our Assistant Superintendent of HR, she needs no introduction really, though, at the podium here, and she will lead the way. Thank you, Dr. Pajardo.
Thank you so much, Dr. Garza. What a wonderful night of celebration. So we're gonna kind of finish this off with more celebrations of individuals as well as teams. Our first category tonight is Impact. So let me tell you a little bit about the honorees for Impact. These are some outstanding folks who have done a wonderful job in responsiveness, customer service, and customer satisfaction, while enhancing the efficiency and effectiveness through innovation, through cost-saving, and I know that's important to you, creativity, and problem-solving. We have individual winners and we have team winners. I'm gonna talk about the individual winners first. Our individual winners are a human resources employee who continuously improves our recruitment process and a technology support specialist who helps everyone feel comfortable with technology. Before I have them come up, school board members, if you'll come on down so we'll be able to take a picture with them. Again, this is the Impact category, and the individual winners are Yvert Corre Valverde from HR and Yvette Wild of Rocky Run Middle School. Let's congratulate them. We also have two collaborative teams that we're recognizing tonight, also in the Impact category. Let me tell you about the two teams that we're honoring tonight. We have an elementary special education team who meets the incredibly diverse needs of more than 100 students and a multi-departmental team whose innovative solution dramatically improved the usability of the eCart teacher resources. Let me first introduce the elementary special education team from Canterbury Woods. They are Jessica Gregory, Linda Levine, Barbara McCracken, Ashley McTheely, Mary Jane Pimentel, Tracy Saludo, Nicholas Speja, Allison Stowe, Marissa Taylor. That is the Canterbury Woods Elementary Special Education Team. And the e... Yes, because we've got another team to recognize in the same category. The eCart Resource Team, Resources Team. And they are Susan Brunn, Allison Calderon, Michael Cisleck, Grace Constantino, Heather Crotch, Sharon Dickens, Derek Kelly, Sarah McDonald, Lisa Nguyen, Sarah Neal, Ken Rice, Jim Siegel, Rick Stegman, Erin Sterling, Teri Suterlin, Suzanne Whaley, and Shane Wheeler. These are our winners, individual and team winners for Impact. No line, no wait over on the right. And that was the Impact category. As our winners, individual and team winners, take their seats and join their families for the... We would like to move to the next category, which is Student Achievement. These employees help students realize their full potential by closing achievement gaps, measuring progress, implementing interventions, or engaging students. The individual winner is an expert math teacher whose unique ability to inspire those around her has positively influenced the entire school community. And that is Anita Hartley of Oakton High School. We'd like to recognize three teams in the Student Achievement category. Let me talk about these collaborative teams. One team is a second grade team whose Whatever It Takes spirit saw 96% of on-grade level readers improve by an additional year. Tremendous. We also will be recognizing a passionate student services team who found creative ways to support struggling students. And finally, we'll recognize a kindergarten team whose commitment to collaboration created a momentum of continuous student improvement. And we have Dogwood in their colorful shirts. I can see the green from over here. Alrighty, the Dogwood Second Grade Team, come on down. April Cook, Rebecca Deary, Melissa Escobar, Emily Griffin, Sharon Griffin, Bridgette Murin, Caitlin Simpson, Stacy Yeatman. That's the Dogwood Elementary Second Grade Team. Now, a student services team. We're honoring Lake Braddock Secondary Student Services Team. Team members include Deborah Brown, Lynn Carrera, Megan Cashman, Peter Ditmar, Judy Edwards, Dylan Hackbart, Jackie Naughton, Gary Ronolo, Linda Semick Smith, and Catherine Ugrinich. That's Lake Braddock Secondary Student Services Team. And our last team that we're honoring tonight in the Student Achievement category is the Kings Park Elementary Kindergarten Team. They are Emily Gill, Kathleen Leach, Chandra Lind, Gina O'Neil, Sue Peck, Ruth Porter, Chelsea Swagner, and Jessica Sweet, Kings Park Elementary Kindergarten Team. That's everybody, yeah. And our final recognition category tonight for our individual and team is the category of growth. These honorees contribute to the development and improvement of programs, services, or curriculum. They foster staff effectiveness and professional development. Our winners are four individuals from two sites. From professional learning and accountability, we have an employee who took on responsibilities of two full-time positions as well as a selfless leader who puts the needs of others before her own. Our two-time full-time employees in the personage of one, Rita Kudlier. And our selfless leader from PLA, Kathleen Walts. And certainly, last but not least, we have two Rocky Run Middle School department chairs. We have the music teacher, who is the glue that holds the team together, and we have the health and physical education teacher whose mentorship and innovation has touched the lives of the school's students and staff for the past 30 years. Come on down, Eric Raykey and Barry Robeson. I'd like to thank those that nominated these outstanding individuals as well as the teams. We love hearing the success stories of our employees, and we are all very truly thankful for everyone using their talents, their energies to advance the goals of Fairfax County School System. Thank you. Thank you.
The board will now take a five-minute recess.
The Choral Festival is one of the best days of the year. I'm seeing the teachers that I'm working with and the students coming together to make something that they couldn't do alone. That group effort is really so important, and I think that's what's really exciting. Certainly, I know that the parents are just thrilled to be able to see their students performing at such a high level.
To prepare for the festival, students rehearse for months at their individual school and at site rehearsals that include several schools. Then, the day before the festival, the entire ensemble gathers to learn the nuances of the music from the conductor. Every year, a new world-class children's choir conductor is selected to guide the students through the challenging music.
He's really good with kids, and he knows how to handle a large group of kids, and he's really good.
Not only are the students learning, but the teachers are too.
The All County Choral Festival is a great opportunity for teachers to collaborate with each other. They see how another teacher might interpret that music and then teach it. They can take those ideas back to use in their own classrooms and their own schools. But they have a chance to talk to the other teachers. As they're watching the clinician work, they could talk over the ideas that they're seeing him or her use with the students.
I think the students and the teachers get so much out of this weekend. So, we get to watch a guest clinician, but the kids are so into it, and you're like, "I need to bring that back. I need to pick up on all these little ways that he's moving, things that they're really connecting with." Because all those kids are so focused, that it just makes you want to write down a million notes to bring back to your own choir.
And that's coming from not only a teacher, but also a former participant. For over forty years, the annual All County Sixth Grade Choral Festival has inspired thousands and thousands of students. Its legacy is a deeper appreciation of music and teamwork.
Definitely, All County Chorus was one of those experiences that sticks with you, and you remember because you're collaborating with so many other people. It makes you want to continue on with choir, and it makes you want to inspire other people to do the same thing.
My name is Tiffany Parisi, and I am a proud member of the Spring Hill Music Program. I enjoy singing and playing the piano. This year, I was fortunate to participate in the All County Choral Festival, and it was a wonderful experience. What I remember most about the festival is how special it was to be a part of such an amazing performance. It was a unique opportunity for those of us who love singing to come together from many different schools, share our musical skills, and work with a professional conductor. And it felt really great to be a member of this group. There are science teams and soccer teams, and now there's a musical team, and I am so glad to be a part of it. Lastly, this experience has shown me that I would like to continue in music. I have seen what it would be like if I pursued music, and know that it is something worth striving for. So, I thank the music program for all it has done for me, and I hope it continues so others can experience the same joy the music program has brought me. Thank you.
At the 2014 Annual Sixth Grade All County Choral Festival, 120 FCPS elementary and middle schools were represented by students who auditioned to participate. Co-sponsored by the Fairfax County Public Schools Fine Arts Office and the Fairfax General Music Educators Association, this opportunity allowed students to find new confidence in their voices in a large ensemble.
I'm not very nervous because we have a big choir, so it's not like all eyes are on me. All eyes are on everybody.
I thought it'd be a good challenge for me to learn, to improve my musicality, and just work on things that I've never done before, and it's really fun.
The Choral Festival is one of the best days of the year. I'm seeing the teachers that I'm working with and the students coming together to make something that they couldn't do alone. That group effort is really so important, and I think that's what's really exciting. Certainly, I know that the parents are just thrilled to be able to see their students performing at such a high level.
To prepare for the festival, students rehearse for months at their individual school and at site rehearsals that include several schools. Then, the day before the festival, the entire ensemble gathers to learn the nuances of the music from the conductor. Every year, a new world-class children's choir conductor is selected to guide the students through the challenging music.
He's really good with kids, and he knows how to handle a large group of kids, and he's really good.
Not only are the students learning, but the teachers are too.
The All County Choral Festival is a great opportunity for teachers to collaborate with each other. They see how another teacher might interpret that music and then teach it. They can take those ideas back to use in their own classrooms and their own schools. But they have a chance to talk to the other teachers. As they're watching the clinician work, they could talk over the ideas that they're seeing him or her use with the students.
I think the students and the teachers get so much out of this weekend. So, we get to watch a guest clinician, but the kids are so into it, and you're like, "I need to bring that back. I need to pick up on all these little ways that he's moving, things that they're really connecting with." Because all those kids are so focused, that it just makes you want to write down a million notes to bring back to your own choir.
And that's coming from not only a teacher, but also a former participant. For over forty years, the annual All County Sixth Grade Choral Festival has inspired thousands and thousands of students. Its legacy is a deeper appreciation of music and teamwork.
Definitely, All County Chorus was one of those experiences that sticks with you, and you remember because you're collaborating with so many other people. It makes you want to continue on with choir, and it makes you want to inspire other people to do the same thing.
And now, I'm going to introduce Tiffany to you.
Hi. My name is Tiffany Parisi, and I am a proud member of the Spring Hill Music Program. I enjoy singing and playing the piano. This year, I was fortunate to participate in the All County Choral Festival, and it was a wonderful experience. What I remember most about the festival is how special it was to be a part of such an amazing performance. It was a unique opportunity for those of us who love singing to come together from many different schools, share our musical skills, and work with a professional conductor. And it felt really great to be a member of this group. There are science teams and soccer teams, and now there's a musical team, and I am so glad to be a part of it. Lastly, this experience has shown me that I would like to continue in music. I have seen what it would be like if I pursued music, and know that it is something worth striving for. So, I thank the music program for all it has done for me, and I hope it continues so others can experience the same joy the music program has brought me. Thank you.
And now, Mr. Pittman, if you'd come forward for your presentation.
Good evening to everybody. Chairman Moon, fine arts leaders in the department. Put this up just a little bit. I have a couple of notes that I've written, so I can give you some fun things to think about, so if you will bear me out. This award is presented tonight, but it's been in the making a very long time. I have been a partner with Fairfax, both as a vendor with Contemporary Music Center, and I've also personally had the honor of being a clinician for many of the programs through the years. My company is a proud member of NAMM, the National Association of Music Merchants, which is a not-for-profit association with a mission to strengthen and promote the benefits of music-making. NAMM unites over nine thousand businesses in the international music instruments and products industry, and I'm here representing them and the NAMM Foundation today. The NAMM Foundation's Best Communities for Music Education initiative recognizes and celebrates communities and their school administrators, the teachers, the board members, parents, community leaders, and students for their support and commitment to music education programs. The NAMM Foundation program also acknowledges the community and the school district's commitment to assure access to music education for all students. In a record-breaking year for participation, the NAMM Foundation designated three hundred and sixty-seven school districts across the country as Best Communities for Music Education. The Best Communities for Music Education program plays an important role and part of NAMM Foundation efforts to make music education part of the core curriculum, assuring that the benefits of music are made available to every child. Numerous studies have demonstrated that learning to play music can boost academic skills as well as social skills. The NAMM Foundation is proud to present a certificate to Fairfax County Public Schools as one of their 2014 Merit Award recipients, and is part of the Best Communities for Music Education program. From everyone at NAMM, the NAMM Foundation, and Contemporary Music Center, and personally myself, I'd like to say congratulations to you, Fairfax County, for the success, and we continue to offer support as we go. Congratulations. And I have a certificate to present.
And if you have any questions?
No, I think I speak on behalf of our board and leadership team. We really appreciate this recognition. We're very, very proud of our fine arts programs, but we know that the programs are what they are because of the music educators we have all throughout our system. And I continue to be so impressed with the talent and what you cultivate in our students, and then, of course, our wonderful students and parents. So, congratulations, and this is really for all of our great educators throughout our system, so thank you very much.
Board members? Ms. McLaughlin?
I did not want you to lose a moment to at least hear from all of us that many of us on this board were blessed to go to public schools where we first learned our love of singing, and I continued that love through middle school and high school and even into college. And so, I want to thank you for the work that you do that help our children experience that level of joy that music really does bring into our lives. And I know in the national conversations about how do we fund all the programs we'd like to have in our public schools, I just wanted you to know that in listening to my colleagues, so many of us absolutely believe and value the work you're doing, and will continue to do our very best to advocate for that continuation in our public schools. So, thank you.
Ms. Hines?
I just wanted to make sure to thank our student who came out, and your first name again, I'm sorry. Tiffany, thank you. Tiffany, thank you so much for coming out. You sat through quite a bit, right? And we got to this point finally. And I know that persistence probably comes partly from your training in the chorus, because I know it takes... And from your mom, she's pointing to her mom. Oh, chorus teacher, I'm sorry. You're chorus teacher. That's right. That's right. You're right. You're pointing to the right person, who has brought you to this point. The words of the students are always the most important thing we hear, so I can't thank you enough for coming out tonight and sharing with us, and you did a beautiful job. Thank you.
I just want you to know that Sixth Grade All County Choral Festival is one of those events that I look forward to every year. And in my fifteen years as a board member, I think I might have missed just only one or two years. Every time I go there, it brings me a lot of joy, and sometimes tears into my eyes. And I see Mr. Gibson there, former school board member, who had always been there with me. And thank you, Mr. Gibson. He's a singer himself. And thank you. Next, we have a citizen participation. Fairfax County citizens who'd like to address the school board should arrange to be placed on the speaker's list by signing up online at www.fcpse.edu, or by calling the school board office at 571-423-1075. If the concern is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson, and while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may stand to show their support. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget and boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students who are school-based employees should not be raised at public meetings. raised at public meetings. Any such concern should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school officials. Citizens are encouraged to write the school board on any school-related topic. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes, and provide at least sixteen copies of their presentation for distribution to the board. Tonight, ten citizens have signed up to address the board, Stuart Gibson, Stephen Greenberg, Avi Catchings, Virginia Shea, Lolita Manchero Smoke, Melissa Cox, Tina Hohn, Michelle Manapies, Kevin Hickerson, and George Vasara. I also know that there are a couple of students from Shantley High School, Enzali and Sajan, who tried to sign up but weren't able to. I'm sorry about the limitation on the number of speakers we have tonight, but if you have turned in your copies of your remarks, they will be distributed to all board members, and board members will read those remarks. But thank you, thank you for coming and joining us this evening. With that, Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garza. I was here three weeks ago to talk about what we didn't know about the proposal to extend Monday elementary school schedule, and now I'm here to share with you a number of things we do know. Number one, I can count. I know you've all made up your minds, and I have no illusions about persuading you to stop this headlong rush into something that your teachers have told you is not ready for primetime. I also know that the proposals had little or no vetting or discussion outside the working groups that developed it and presented to the school board just twenty-nine days ago. In fact, the proposal comes with more questions than answers. The only thing anyone knows for certain about the proposal is it'll create a Uniform Elementary School Day. How that'll happen at each school, what it'll mean for teachers and students, how much it's going to eventually cost, how you're going to pay for it after next year, those are all to be decided in the future. In fact, I know that the implementation plan is contained in the agenda item has three components, none of which contains any details about the plan itself, because the implementation plan is to develop the plan. Which brings me to the three Orwellian things I know about tonight. The board's 2014 Public Engagement Plan says embedded in the culture and governance process are clear, broad-based, timely, and transparent communications between stakeholders and the school board. Unless apparently the school board thinks otherwise, none of those elements are present here. The first rule of budgeting is never commit one-time non-recurring funds to pay for recurring expenses, unless apparently the school board thinks otherwise. Third, we should always listen to our teachers on significant issues that affect them, unless apparently the school board thinks otherwise. In last week's hastily-developed survey, respondents were asked if they support "the" proposal to eliminate early Monday closing, giving no details about the proposal. Nearly two-thirds of your employees answered the survey, and of those teachers who expressed an opinion for or against, that was about eighty-two percent, more than two-thirds said they opposed making the change for next year. By the way, read their comments, they don't trust you. As my board member told me this week, I know this is really about priorities. In fact, it's about a super priority. By adopting this proposal tonight, and committing to spend up to eight million dollars per year to implement it, the board is saying that ending early Monday, or Monday early closing is so important, it shouldn't have to compete against other priorities: teacher pay, class size, instruction, later in high school start times, in the normal budget process. You've committed yourselves to fund this in 2015, 16, et cetera, even if everything else suffers. Finally, I know you can't repeal the law of unintended consequences, and you can't defy reality. That means you can't expect the board of supervisors to give you another eight million dollars next year. You can't expect them to raise property taxes in an election year. And if you think the General Assembly or the Congress is going to give you more money, well, I got a bridge in Brooklyn I'd like to sell you. You can't expect enrollment to drop or student needs to decrease. In other words, this is your first priority. If you vote for this tonight, you will be saying this is your first priority. That's wrong. It's at the expense of teacher pay, class size, buses, technology, high school start times, and every other priority you might have. Now you know it too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Next, we have Stephen Greenberg to be followed by Avi Catchings.
Dr. Garza, Chairman Moon, esteemed school board members, the recently honored and freed Mr. Ash, my name is Steve Greenberg, I am the president of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. I will be speaking tonight in regards to Agenda Item 4.02, Master Calendar Revision. For 2014-15, the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers supports that the school board approve the master calendar revision for the 2014-15 school year, which modifies the approved 2014-2015 standard school year calendar as detailed in the agenda item, however, and by a slight margin. Our members prefer calendar option B, which honors Veterans Day. This is a consistent position that our membership has taken concerning the holiday and that portion of the agenda tonight, but don't get caught up on that. Our members appreciate that this school board, finally, is doing something substantial to address our teachers' workload, planning, and time issues. The fact that you will put these protections for them into regulation is important. Please know that we will make sure that this works and works well. We will help you to implement and ensure that any concerns of our employees are addressed before the fall. We celebrate this victory with our community tonight. I tried to think about what I would say in three minutes, what would be most important, and thankfully, Mr. Gibson helped me. He reminded me of who the only school board member was with the previous board who would not even meet with me to discuss teacher workload issues. How dare you speak on behalf of our teachers! I would like to say, I remember what I need to be doing. Right here. Tina Hohn, you, Sandy Evans, and Patty Reed, you are the three that stuck for our teachers back in 2010 when we first came to you with this problem. I would also like to thank Michael Harrison of FEA, who was my brother who came with me. You all cared so much. Thank you, Dr. Bajarder, for getting culture change in HR, respecting our employees, and genuinely caring, is where it starts. She began the change in tone even before Dr. Garza arrived. I'd like to thank Ms. Heinz for giving up her teaching career, to put the teacher perspective on the board. It matters. Thank you, Ms. Darrenette Kofax and Mr. Stork for your work on 4510 Employee Organization School Board Meetings in place so we can begin dealing preventively with issues like this one. When we all work together, we can solve problems in a way that everyone wins. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, for organizing the town hall on workload last spring. With all of the teachers and the school board, that's part of the momentum that got us here today. Thank you, Mrs. Schultz, for watching over the task force and making sure our teachers' unencumbered planning time was protected under this new plan. Thank you, Chairman Moon, for your leadership on this over the past few months. Thank you to our county supervisors providing financial support for this effort. May I have an amen, Dr. Garza? Sweet. Thank you to all the school board members for your vote and for helping us to make this work correctly over the next couple of months. Thank you, Dr. Garza, for caring. Thank you to our parents and community for being patient. The fact that you have expressed so much concern about your teachers in the last few weeks is really appreciated. This will pass tonight, Stu. It will pass because it's good for teachers, parents, and politicians. It should pass because it's good for kids. Whatever works, whatever gets us there. Thank you for your service, your time, and caring about your teachers. Good night.
The next speaker is Avi Catchings to be followed by Virginia Shea and Lolita Manchero Smoke.
Good evening. I'm Avi Catchings, co-Vice Chair of the Coalition of Silence. I want to begin by honoring the retiring student representative to the school board, Will. Will Ash, thank you for your service. Your number-one point tonight in your farewell speech demonstrated that you do get it. For you to acknowledge the importance of the achievement gap and closing it by leveling the playing fields for all kids and making it fair and equitable speaks volumes to your character. Thank you. It was only a couple of years ago that one of our COTS kids held the very same role, Eugene Coleman III, or EJ as we know him. EJ was only the second African-American student to serve as student representative to this school board, and he was the first student from Mount Vernon High School ever elected. When EJ's service was completed, COTS decided that instead of a gift, we wanted to give him a legacy. So the Coalition of the Silence established the EJ Award, which is given to outstanding COTS eighth-grade students who demonstrate the kind of character and leadership that EJ exemplified as student representative, student leader, and community advocate. By selecting an eighth grader for the award, COTS hopes to inspire the awareness as they prepare to enter high school and encourage them to run for student representative to this school board. This year, we are proud to have honored two students. Ishmael Harrison is from Rocky Run Middle School. He was nominated because of his positive leadership skills and his generous spirit. He is active in sports and band, and is a strong role model to others. I attended the award last week at Rocky Run, and I must tell you, the auditorium erupted in cheers and applause when he received his honor. Our second honoree is Angelique Padmore from Lanier Middle School. Angelique embodies the meaning of service in her daily life by volunteering alongside board of supervisors for a local technical school that supports educational projects in Nicaragua. She is also active in her school's orchestra and many other organizations, as she demonstrates a deep level of love towards serving others. Dr. Lolita Manchero Smoke attended Angelique's award ceremony last week, and the response for Angelique was also heartfelt by the students. EJ inspired a vision of hope and confidence to many students, especially those who come from underrepresented minority backgrounds and who attend less affluent high schools in this county. Too often, these students feel that opportunities like serving as student representatives are beyond them. We hope we can all work together to change this mindset and all the factors that contribute to that mindset. For now, COTS is doing its part through Ishmael and Angelique, and the EJ Award. Thank you.
The next speaker is Virginia Shea to be followed by Lolita Manchero Smoke and Melissa Cox.
Good evening, Chairman Moon, members of the board, and Superintendent Garza. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Full School Days group. Thank you very much for putting the proposal for full-day Mondays on the agenda. This is a major step forward in improving our elementary school schedules. Eliminating Monday early dismissals and adding two and a half hours to the school week will be a huge benefit to the students. The master schedules of our elementary schools have numerous priorities that compete for a limited amount of time. We need to provide more time to meet today's problems. We need to provide time for the core curriculum, as well as physical activity and recess. Currently, the elementary schools have only enough time in the week to allow ten minutes per day for recess. Schools which allow students to have more than ten minutes per day for recess are not meeting the requirements of the standards of accreditation. A ten-minute limit for recess is unreasonable. Ignoring state requirements is illegal. The substandard school schedule in Fairfax should be fixed immediately, so we can provide at least twenty minutes for recess while still meeting the state requirements for the standard school day. And the state requirements trump Robert's Rules of Order or budgeting traditions. You have to meet the state standards, period. The cost of $7.6 million for all 142 elementary schools represents an affordable investment for a very substantial improvement in the schedules for both teachers and students. The first time I testified in favor of full-day Mondays was in 1989. The school board was considering proposals for restructuring both the secondary school day and the elementary school day. They agreed to the seven-period day for the secondary schools. They supported the concept of a Uniform Elementary Student Day, but voted to delay implementation until the following year. Well, it sounds like a maybe-good-enough result. One of the reasons given for the delay was to allow further study. The next year, the school board rejected the revised proposal. This shows how a vote to delay can turn what could be a win-win situation into a no-change situation. We don't need more study, we need action to help children, and this will help children. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lolita Manchero Smoke to be followed by Melissa Cox and Tina Hohn.
My name is Tracy Embry, and I'm a member and strong supporter of the Coalition of the Silence, COTS. I'm here to express my strong support for Dr. Garza and her proposal to restore full-day Mondays in elementary schools next fall. I'm a Fairfax County resident that grew up in the county from first grade at Mount Vernon Woods Elementary, on to Walt Whitman Middle School, and through graduation from Mount Vernon High School. I was actually surprised to learn that Fairfax County elementary schools even had half-day Mondays. When I was growing up, Fairfax County had a full school day every day. I cannot help but wonder how the loss of this learning time has contributed to the persistent achievement gap at all levels of achievement in Fairfax County. COTS believes all kids will benefit from a full day of learning on Mondays, a more consistent school week, and a predictable end to the school year. But we are especially concerned about economically disadvantaged students and Black and Latino students who are caught on the wrong side of the achievement gap. These same kids are dramatically underrepresented at the highest levels of academic achievement in this county. More time in school could play a key role in closing the gap. Study after study shows that more time in school is the closest thing to a silver bullet in closing the achievement gap. School attendance is also a contributor to the achievement gap, and although we have not seen any specific data from FCPS, we suspect that absenteeism on Mondays is slightly higher than other days during the week. Could it be that missing a half-day doesn't feel like a big deal? So instead of losing a half-day of school, kids end up losing full days? More time in school includes reducing absenteeism for our kids, and instilling in them at elementary school that school is a place they want and need to be. Finally, we have heard comments that this change is too big to do next fall. Forgive me, but I feel these folks are asking for delay for the sake of delay. In my opinion, this change is already long overdue. If a patient is bleeding in a hospital, we don't want to treat them because of concerns that frankly are not directly related to that patient and his or her needs is absurd. Our kids need treatment now, they need more time in school now, they need full-day Mondays now. We thank you, Dr. Garza, for understanding the importance of now in this academic opportunities for our children and school board members. Thank you for your courage and standing strong against those who would unnecessarily allow our kids to lose another year of half-day Mondays. Please vote to reinstate full-day Mondays this fall. Our kids cannot afford any more lost learning time. Thank you.
Next, we have Melissa Cox to be followed by Tina Hohn. Ms. Cox? Tina Hohn, former school board member?
I can count two. Yay. Dr. Garza, school board members and staff, I am Tina Hohn, founder of the Coalition of the Silence. We speak for the largest stakeholder group in this county, Mr. Gibson. We represent African-American, Black, African-American, Latino, and poor kids. It's about you because you made it about you. We represent fifty to sixty thousand kids in this school system.
Okay, Ms. Hohn, earlier today, earlier this evening, I was a little too slow to react when a testimony invoked a personal attack on a citizen. So let's stay away from a personal attacks on any person.
And my time will be restored, correct?
Your time will give you a full three minutes. Could you restore time? Mr. Gibson, I'm so sorry earlier that I was not doing my job right. I apologize.
"The arc of the moral universe is long, and it bends towards justice." That's one of my favorite quotes. Tonight, I am overwhelmed with gratitude. COTS started its quest for more time in school by asking for restoration of full-day Mondays in the neediest schools in Fairfax County. Until a few years ago, many of those schools still had full-day Mondays, but they were lost in a budget battle that I will never forget or forgive. The schools that lost full-day Mondays were filled with COTS kids. The very next year, each of those schools saw a dip in achievement, two of those schools did not make AYP. My heart has been broken until tonight. Tonight, when this school board votes, I hope that my faith will be restored. COTS always believed more time in school was important for every child. We just never thought we could get it. We underestimated you, Dr. Garza, and Ginger Shea, you go, girl. We will never underestimate you again, Dr. Garza. You are a bold, creative, innovative, fearless, dynamic, solutions-oriented, action-oriented, and gracious leader. You get done that which everyone says cannot get done. You have resisted the bureaucratic lethargy that says maintain the status quo or don't move so fast. Thank you for understanding the urgency of now. Thank you for knowing that a year in the life of a child can never be recovered. Thank you for meaning those words. Thank you for meaning those words, not just saying them. Every change has consequences. For music and arts, there may be cuts. COTS, of all organizations, understands the importance of these programs, but we are convinced that the right balance has been struck in the master schedule and ask you to support it. We also empathize with the anxiety some of our teachers, but not all, are feeling. Steve Greenberg and FCFT, we thank you for taking the leap of faith with us. To my dear friends in FEA, an association that never failed me and that I never failed when I served on this school board, please take this leap of faith with us, too. I know why you are scared. You were disrespected and dumped on by the prior administration. Ambitious leaders with clever ideas built their resumes on your backs. You have post-traumatic stress syndrome. So do I. Dr. Garza, because COTS kids have been betrayed so many times, you know I felt betrayed by your budget, and I apologize for my behavior then. But you gave me your word. You told me you were working on something, and boy, were you. Thank you so much for keeping your word. I want every teacher to have the same trust in you that I have. Along with FEA, Steve and I were a force to contend with for the other guy. I want the three of us to stand together again, this time in full support of you, the school system, great teachers, and most of all, our kids. Onward, Dr. Garza, with all deliberate speed. Thank you.
Next speaker is Michelle Manapess to be followed by Kevin Hickerson and George Basera. And after Mr. Basera, since there was one no-show, I plan to allow either Anjari or Sajan to speak. Michelle Manapess.
Good evening. I stand before you tonight to urge your approval of Superintendent Garza's recommendation to implement full-day Mondays in our elementary schools for the 2014-15 school year. Of course, this change involves complex planning, but I'm confident that the myriad issues can be worked out in time, just as full-day kindergarten was fully implemented with comparable lead time. There are so many good reasons to make the change in the master schedule as recommended: expanding time for recess to improve student health, give children opportunities for socialization and free play, and increase their ability to focus after physical exertion; providing greater flexibility to accommodate weather impacts on school attendance; maximizing classroom instruction, thereby reducing potential remediation needs in our academically at-risk children; and ensuring that all students are not only supervised on Monday afternoons but also are learning, something that can't be guaranteed today, especially for our families with greatest needs. In my mind, though, expanding elementary learning time also accomplishes a key priority of yours: early childhood education. There isn't enough space or money to fully implement pre-K right now, of course, but giving our youngest learners another two and a half hours every week would demonstrate your commitment to this critical aspect of closing the achievement gap. Staff is recommending full-day Mondays next year and are prepared to make it work. Parents have spoken loudly that they want full-day Mondays next year. Teachers are endorsing full-day Mondays next year. The only thing left now is your affirmative vote. And while I have some time remaining, I want to also urge your adoption of the proposed SRNR amendments. I believe the policy changes will go a long way toward reducing out-of-school suspension time. The new language appears less punitive overall and puts much-needed distance between school administrators and the hearings office, which should make the appeal process more objective. My hope, too, is that the changes will compel more accountability for administrators' disciplinary actions and decisions. Since I'm never really satisfied, of course, I believe there's still a need for parent notification without delay or as soon as practicable, and I also think that restorative justice efforts offer great promise for healing of our children, our communities, and our schools. Please remove the requirement for principal authorization for such efforts to become more commonplace. Thank you, Dr. Garza, for your leadership and your assertiveness on this issue, and I thank the school board members for your time all year long and your attention tonight. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kevin Hickerson to be followed by George Basera.
Good evening Superintendent Garza, Chairman Moon, and school board members. My name is Kevin Hickerson, Vice President of the Fairfax Education Association, and I am speaking on behalf of FEA President Kimberly Adams, who is unable to be here tonight. Contrary to the word on the street, the FEA does not support implementation of full-day Mondays for the 2015 school year. We appreciate that Deputy Superintendent's Paris Work Group may have found potential ways to decrease the impact of snow days, ensure recess for elementary students, and make sure that teachers have adequate planning time that has been so desperately needed. But we believe that the process would have benefited from classroom teacher and specialist involvement. A survey of only some elementary school staff sent out less than a week before a critical school board vote does not indicate a genuine desire to include our voices. While FEA does believe that the direction that this proposal is headed is optimistic, we still have significant concerns that have not been addressed. We have advocated for and give our support to the stated objectives and goals of this proposal. However, we have yet to see what the schedule will look like for specialists and are concerned regarding the potential for increased workload and particularly the possibility of higher student-teacher ratios in these class periods. We have expressed the need for adequate planning time and reasonable workloads for all teachers. This includes specialists. We are very hesitant to agree that a viable plan can be executed in the available timeframe between today and the first day of school in September. Staff contracts for the majority of your certified personnel ended yesterday. You have not given them adequate time to prepare for next school year, and we must point out these professionals will not be back in their job assignments until 61 days from today. We believe that the regulation language must be clearly defined to protect teacher-directed planning as well as collaborative planning. We also ask that the administration not simply move meetings to before or after school time, thus lengthening the workday. Drafts of regulation language have not even been presented for our association input. We know that you value fidelity of implementation. We believe that this timeline does not respect intentions towards a positive implementation for a project this large a scale. Many projects are laudable in theory, but we have recently experienced all the unintended consequences of a rushed implementation of our evaluation process. You must be sure that the implementation is properly planned and outlined and that timeframes match reality of a school site and full-staff compliance. Given this information, I ask that you consider whether this is a realistic timeframe. Our final thoughts are with regard to funding. Will the required funding be available in the budget through carryover or the use of end-of-year balance, which we will submit is at odds with your commitment to employee compensation? And will these monies be available each year going forward? Do you have the commitment on the part of the Board of Supervisors to contribute a significant portion of the needed $8 million? Or will we again experience cut to the positions in the fiscal year 2016 budget, thereby increasing the workload on employees once again? As professionals in the schools, of course, we want the best possible education environment for our students, our teachers, and our whole Fairfax community, but this proposal cannot be implemented at the expense of your employees. It must be done with us and not to us. We implore you that you include your employees in decisions that directly impact them in their work environment. Thank you.
Next speaker is George Basera. And after Mr. Basera, as I stated, that either Anjari or Sajan could speak for three minutes.
Good evening, and it's been a long night. I wanted to talk about four things tonight to you. First thing is, you received my email on the MSAOC charge, School Board liaison. Hopefully, you've had time to read that. Other things, I'm just going to do tidbits. The CAG 200 to be on the strategic plan to give the ECR, still going to harp on that. And also, thank you for adding HEA to the MSAOC for now. You guys can look at the advisory committees and see how they're going to change. Mostly, it's not going to change until October, November, and it's not fearful of the new membership to start then, so most likely, it's going to start for 2015, 16. So the current membership for MSAOC will be staying the same. Not saying my members aren't open and will want to hear different members additions or deletions. Passages report. You guys were presented executive summary. You guys never dwelt into the full report. That's where the meat of it was. Most people know the passages report does benchmarks of third, sixth, eighth, 12th grades. That's where the 12th grade should be where the focus is at also, so I don't see a lot of emphasis on it. It's the end product where our Board of Supervisors talk about what are we getting out of FCPS? It's nice to have third, sixth, and eighth, but 12th, at the end of the day, is what they're worried about. What is the vision of the passages report? You know, is it supposed to be blended in this portrait of a graduate? I assume it is. So then with this new system directive, where are the new data metrics going to come from if we're moving away from the SOL testing type of avenue? That has to be addressed. What is going to be next year? If passages even exists. You know, in terms of staff time, I don't know if it's really productive. You already have student achievement goals one, two, and three. You know, one is definitely the meat. Two and three is still fully developed. I would like more emphasis on one instead of the whole one-night work session and all three achievement 100-page document. You guys don't have time to read that, not for $20,000. I don't expect you to. Next thing, full-day Mondays. Obviously, a hot topic. One thing, I'm not going to say I'm for it against it. One thing I want to talk about is community engagement, the new norm you're setting. Seven days for community engagement. Let's be honest, I don't want to hear you all or parent advocates say there's not enough time because you guys are setting the new norm tonight with seven days community engagement. Let's get things moving. That's what I'm hearing. I hear things spitting out more issues, out, in, and out. Seven days, really? It's a new benchmark there. As a citizen, Board of Supervisors, if they've already promised you money, earmarked money of carryover money, I want to know where the community input was in that process. They harper back on you guys, where's your carryover money? Have you guys talked to your citizens? Where is the open dialogue? I need to ping back me personally on them also. If they're promising money already without that discussion, then I have issues with that. Last but not least, or two other items, I wanted to thank you all for the last two years. Thank you for helping my son graduate late breakfast past Monday. He won't be going to UVA. He turned down UVA and he's going to Virginia Tech. But I think Ryan and Pat, I think you agree, I think Virginia Tech's engineering program is just a little bit better. So I'm being nice. And so, but I'd like to thank you all. You, LT, staff, everyone in the system. I calculated roughly, you guys have contacted me or I contacted you either six in the morning, 6:30 teleconference calls, at events, texting, in person, different social media, outside. I know you guys hate me. We have time for one quick minute. And I really should say you have time for 10 minutes for each of my questions. So I calculated roughly, lowballing about the last two and a half years that I met you somewhere on the campaign trail, about 3,500 times. Tremendous. So I don't want anyone ever to say that you guys don't outreach or answer emails in a timely fashion. I understand some people write me back and I ping back them one, two in the morning. Weekends, your consultants have contacted me in the weekends. For $20,000, I'm going to go on this theme, it's atrocious. Board of Supervisors have $75,000. They're going to, early indications, they're going to go up to $90,000. So the difference between 20 and 90, and you guys are going to harp about, should we go 30, should we go 40? I personally think you should go 47.5, up to 75 midway, or if not, just 50% of whatever they get to, you guys get the same pay. If people don't understand the work you do, you know what? I want them to do it. I'm glad they have their own jobs and are doing what you do at night and run a family. Other things I'd like to say, I want to be a regular parent, so I'm going back to the elementary. I want to ask questions like, has the elementary progress report been evaluated? Is my local PTA unit combining with SCCPJ, do they see a use in it? My district member, she will start her town hall meeting soon, so I'm just waiting for that, too. Also, I want to end with my last thing, if you don't mind. My son told me, and you guys know my son from the first year of the Student Development Program, came home one night, right, I could roughly do 10, 10:30. We talked around 11:00. And he said to myself, I'll wrap this up, sir. He said to myself, and he looked at me, I was tired and sleeping. He said, "Do you..." I said, "I pray for me, my daughter, his sister. I pray, I pray for her teachers, administrative principals, because when you get, when she gets to kindergarten 2015, I'm signing up for SAC next in about two weeks. SAC, I'm just signing up for a year ahead of them." He said, "I pray for them." He said, "Well, you know what? I pray I don't have to advocate as much." Because, but I think I'd be a well-informed parent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Basera. Who will speak for three minutes? Stacia Fulain, please.
Hello, I'm Sajin Ron Vawala. I'm a student at Chantilly High School, and I'm a rising junior, and I'm here to talk about later school start times for high school. First of all, I'd like to thank the school board for addressing such an issue as sleep loss. I'd also like to thank Ms. Smith and Mr. Volkov for proposing to keep an option five of no change, and that's exactly what I'm here to advocate today. I bring to you five reasons as to why option five is the best option and no change is what we need to stick with. First of all, starting school later is not going to increase sleep for high school students, and it's simply a logical reason. You're simply going to shift the daily routine of high school students because you are not reducing the amount of time that each student spends doing each activity in their daily routine. By shifting the school times, you're shifting the daily routine of students, and therefore you're not getting that extra time needed to increase the sleep of students. So therefore, changing at all is not going to increase sleep and it's not going to achieve what we are trying to achieve here with the proposed solutions. Secondly, traffic patterns. Starting school later will mean more teenagers are on this road driving during rush hour and closer to rush hour if high school starts later. Surveys show and studies show that teenagers are generally more likely to be involved in car accidents due to their lack of experience. As a result, we are putting not only the student's safety at risk but also the community's safety at risk, and therefore, the traffic patterns is another important factor which these options are going to affect, and option five best achieves the safety of the student and the community. Moreover, extracurricular activities and after-school jobs are going to be pushed further back later into the evening. Often, at the beginning of the spring season, it's very cold during sports season. I speak from experience, I play tennis, and at the beginning of spring season, it's very cold in the evening. Moving on to intraschool competitions, there have been proposals to allow athletes to leave school earlier than other students. However, this is impractical because you're proposing that student athletes lose instructional time, which is a fundamental value of the education system. Fourth, the cost. Looking at the cost, every option that has been proposed costs more than $2.75 million, whereas option five costs $0. You're not adding any more buses, there's no extra cost, and this amount of money that we're spending to change school start times needs to be spent in raising teacher salaries. And finally, we need to allow students to spend more time with their family, and starting school later is simply going to change the routines and worsen the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you go, could you, the young lady, would you introduce yourself? Would you identify yourself for us?
Anjali Johan. I'm a rising junior at Chantilly High School.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming and thank you for staying on the awesome, through these late hours.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a student representative matters, and we'll go to Mr. Ash, your last one.
Well, in the interest of time, I'm just going to keep it short. Thank you for a great year on the board. I expressed my final advocacy opinions during my remarks, but thank you once again to everyone who's helped me along the way.
Thank you, Mr. Ash. Next, we have action items, with the first being a 2014 Passages Monitoring Report and Presentation. And Mrs. Strauss, you have a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the school board accept the Passages Monitoring Report and Presentation as detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second? Second, it was Mrs. Smith. Mrs. Strauss, you want to speak on your motion?
Just very briefly, the Passages Report provides summary information about student performance at critical points, namely kindergarten, third, sixth, eighth, and 12th. Passages is based on a composite of assessments. For example, the third-grade Passages Report shows the percent of third-grade students who passed all four SOLs in reading, math, science, and history. Passages Report is a co-report that further builds out the information that we get on the student achievement goals early in the year, and I urge my colleagues to support it. Thank you.
Mrs. Smith, you want to speak on your second? Is there any board member? If not, we'll call for the vote. The motion is to accept the Passages Monitoring Report and Presentation as detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor, raise your hand. Strauss, Evans, McElvin, Smith, Moon, Hines, Reed, Velkopf, and Stork. Those opposing an abstention is Mrs. Scholz. We have Mrs. McLachlan away from the table and Mr. Nacofak absent. The motion passes. The motion passes. Next, we have a master calendar revision 2014, 2015. Ms. Hines for a motion.
Yes, I move that the school board approve the master calendar revision for the 2014-15 school year, which modifies the approved 2014-15 standard school year calendar as detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. McElvin. And Ms. Hines, you want to speak on your motion?
Yeah, I'd like to defer to Superintendent Dr. Garza for a minute to do, just give us a little summary of the change, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. We began almost a year ago studying our master schedules and in terms of looking forward to the future and what we can do to maximize instructional time. Having been an elementary principal, one of the first things I noticed when I came on board is, in fact, I commented to elementary principals very early on, it's like, oh my goodness, how in the world do you cover all the instructional, you know, and address all of our instructional needs of our students, given our current structure? So we began that process, Dan Paris so, so skillfully led that process in investigating and examining ways that we can maximize instructional time. And then we had some other things that happened that forced us to take a more deep dive around looking at our master schedules, around snow days, et cetera. Thus, we started to move, accelerate and move the issue forward. And I know that these kinds of changes are difficult, but in my estimation, this change needs to happen. I think it's quite obvious, actually. This has been in place since 1972, and no doubt the change makes some very uncomfortable, causing some folks to either be for it or against it, or maybe change one day to the next, because it's difficult. And we know that the timeline is aggressive, but it is still the right thing to do. It's good for children, it increases instructional time, it's good for teachers, it's good for families. We have heard time and time again, including from both of our teacher associations, almost on a monthly basis, what are you doing about the teacher workload, particularly at the elementary level? We've had working condition survey, after working condition survey, we've actually had a full report from FEA that they published and presented to us a couple of months ago, asking us what we were doing about planning time for our teachers. So we can sit back and not do anything about it, or we can do something, which is, I think, what we need to do and what one would expect us to do. And waiting for all the details, rarely do we make decisions where we have every single detail completed. You set the direction, then you leave it to staff, and we have lots of great people in the system to figure it out. And we will adopt the I's and we will cross the T's and we will be ready in September, assuming you adopt this tonight, and we will be ready to receive students and do great things as we continue to do on a annual basis. So while not everyone here tonight might embrace this change, we will continue to engage all of our stakeholders this summer. We do have a plan. We do have a plan of focus groups. We do have a plan to engage a working group. Our principals have actually been working on this plan for six years, so this is nothing that, it's been, our principals have spent years and years on this because they recognize that it was a need and the additional instructional time is most definitely beneficial to our students. So we will engage our stakeholders, we will solve, we will answer all the questions and we will make this beneficial for all of our students first and foremost. Two and a half hours per week is meaningful. We will address the fact that we need to have dedicated planning time for our elementary teachers. This will be good for our parents because it will be a uniform day. So it will, for the first time ever in the history of FCPS, this will create dedicated planning time for our teachers, and we have not had that at the elementary level. It does allow for the expansion of FLESS, which is a priority, that this is stated priority of this school system. We have nine schools that have, are on our waiting list right now. We are positioned to move forward, assuming this is adopted, with at least five or six who are positioned to implement for next year, according to Dr. Teddy Paderas and her team. We finally, I know some have brought up concerns about workload and limitations and how much we'll use different specialists. I think we've stated, this board's had at least two work sessions on this topic. We've stated that we are not going to change the regulations on those limitations that already exist in regulation around specialist time, including counselors, librarians and others. We already indicated that would not change. We've also indicated that we would not be changing the regulations that support our music programs. Those will not need to change. So again, I believe that while the timeline is aggressive, I believe that we have great people. We will solve it, we will get it ready, and we will be, like I said, ready for school in the fall. There are a couple of things I need to comment on with regard to the calendar that is associated with this. It spreads professional development time and teacher-directed time throughout the year. It spreads that out, which I think is a good thing. There were some changes that were made to the calendar that I want to point out to the members of the board, and you should have received, received an update on this. In the calendar presented that's associated with this master schedule change, we would ask that the November 3rd and 4th dates be flipped so that the teacher-directed workday would be on a Tuesday and the staff development day be on the Monday because of elections. And they would like to have fewer cars in our parking lots and fewer disruption for that, so we, we would ask your consideration of that. In addition, the first week back for our employees, beginning on August the 25th, where we had that full week of activities getting ready for school to start, we would like consideration of the teacher-directed work planning day to be any one of the four days besides August the 27th, so that, because some have already started to schedule and plan for open houses. And so that would give them the flexibility at the campus level to make that determination. And so that was something that we would ask your consideration as well. Be happy to answer any questions that any member of the board might have.
Okay, thank you. Thanks a lot for that wrap-up there. To give people, anybody who is here who may not know what the change in the calendar is, but I don't think there's anyone here who doesn't know what we're talking about, which is we're, the main thing that we'd be doing is changing from the short Monday and the long Tuesday through Thursday to a uniform day for elementary school. Before I start, I just, I want to thank some old friends for being here tonight. I thank everyone who came here tonight to, to share their thoughts with us about this, but especially Stu Gibson, my predecessor on the school board, and some educator friends of mine who I've known for a long time. They're here tonight even though they know that the vote will probably not go their way. And I, and they've been here waiting a long time, and, you know, they're here because they care about kids, just like we do. And they may have a different opinion about how to do this, but they're also here because they want to be involved in the process of making this decision. And I have to say that this is, this has been very fast, you know, and I know that we will, we will involve people in this decision, but up until now, I can understand very much the concerns that people have. But I quickly would just say, I think that the uniform elementary day, I am supporting this because I think the uniform elementary day is good for students, provides more instruction time, more recess time. It's good for many parents. Many parents have requested this for a long time. It's been under consideration for years, and it will allow us flexibility and control of our calendar, which we have not had. It will also, the promise and the challenge of this is the protected teacher planning time. And I think that's the part of it that teachers have always worried about. If we go to a full-day Monday, how will you ensure that I have protected planning time? And we are asking for a leap of faith, you know, from teachers, that's absolutely true. And I can understand teachers feeling like, you know, we have, we have not kept faith, really, you know, over the last few years. We say there'll be no new initiatives, and there are new initiatives. We say we'll protect your Monday afternoon planning time, and we don't. There are, there are times, there have been times, and I can understand why teachers feel unsure about us taking a vote now when we don't really, we haven't had all those important conversations yet with you. I have to say that Dr. Garza has not given me any reason to not have faith when she says, "We will get this done, we will be ready by the fall, we will engage teachers, we will engage principals, we'll make this happen." I know that was, there was yet another meeting with elementary principals today, and I know that at least for one of my principals who I spoke to after that, it made her feel much more comfortable with what's coming. So I know that with every conversation, we will get closer to a comfort level. I am confident about that, or I would not support this. So the question is, how? And I can tell you, you know, we have settled some of the questions that have come up, but I know just from talking to teachers, there are three questions off the top of my head that I don't know, that I don't have answers to yet about how we're going to do this. The 15 minutes, banking 15 minutes on either end of the day, there are some schools, the idea is that you bank 15 minutes of time at the beginning of the day and the end of the day when kids are not in the room. Well, the reality for some schools is that those, that day is very tight, and there is not 15 minutes at the beginning and the end of the day, so that's not going to be possible for everybody. So what are we going to do? How are we going to help those principals provide faculty meeting time when they don't have that margin at the beginning and end of the day? We need to answer that question. Collaboration with special ed and other specialists in the building, you know, are we going to make sure that there's collaborative learning time, collaborative meeting time with everyone in the building? That's a concern that I think has yet to be answered. And then I would just say the two November workdays for elementary teachers, those have traditionally been days where we have meetings with parents, parent conferences. And if you have upwards of 27, 28, 29 kids in your classroom, it's going to be very hard to do that all on one day. So I think we're going to also have to provide flexibility for principals to use both those days for parent conferences. Those are just some of the examples of questions that have not been answered, and they have to, and we got to make sure that we engage our teachers in that. It'll be school by school, and it won't be easy. I appreciate everyone who has been willing to take this leap of faith with us, and I am, I am hopeful, but we do have to, and I know that we will remain vigilant, so I will support this.
Hines?
Sorry.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay, all right. Mrs. McElvin.
Rarely does this board have the opportunity to right a historical wrong, but tonight provides us with one of those rare opportunities. With an affirmative vote tonight, this board will be able to say that we fixed a problem that has languished in our system for 40 years, and that we did so by, one, improving teacher workload issues, two, increasing instructional and recess time, three, girding against the possibility of more extended school years, and four, pushing us toward instituting foreign language in all of our elementary schools. All the while, we will have the Board of Supervisors committing to pay for all of it. Tonight, I urge all of my colleagues to vote to support full-day Mondays. It is not just a win-win proposal that Ms. Fitzshay proposed, it is a win-win, win-win-win proposal. I know that there are some community members who believe that tonight's vote constitutes acting in haste, and I don't disagree with them. But for four decades, previous school boards have passed this issue on to new boards without any substantive improvements. And when we have this rare chance to help our students and our parents and our community members at once, I much prefer to be accused of acting in haste than to once again pass this problem on to new generations and sacrifice all the good that could come of this in the coming year. Community members and teacher organizations have rightly brought forward many flaws in the original plan. Yet, as those flaws were brought to our attention, this administration has worked very hard to solve them. After seeing the progress that has been made in only two weeks, whether it's been the scheduling of the all-county chorus rehearsals or pushing ahead with schools that are interested already in adopting FLESS, I'm confident that we will continue to make the most of a challenging situation. And I encourage those community members who spoke tonight to continue to bring those concerns to us, and we will listen, and I'm confident the administration will act on them. Yes, our period for public engagement was truncated because of the timeline. Yes, it will take time to hire all of the foreign language teachers to get FLESS in all of our elementary schools. But tonight proves that this board will continue to act decisively to support the work of our superintendent and find solutions to the intractable problems of our time. Now, this plan is not perfect, but I do guarantee you that FCPS has never implemented a perfect rollout of anything. And if we waited for perfection, we'd never get anything done, and we'd just continue passing things on to the next generation and the next school board. So we could sit back here tonight and criticize a proposal that isn't perfect, or we can continue to roll up our sleeves and resolve the concerns that continue to arise. This is all to ensure that our staff, and also to ensure that our staff has the resources necessary to implement this correctly. Tonight, we have the historic opportunity to do something extremely powerful for our students, our families and our teachers. So I do continue to urge my colleagues to vote in favor of this proposal.
Okay, Mrs. Scholz to be followed by Mrs. Strauss.
Don't even bother running the time because I have a lot to say. So this is a trip down memory lane. I just did a calculation that in the fall of 1974, I was headed into second grade at Greenbrier East Elementary School and was a half-day Monday kid, because you just said we started in 1972. So 1972, so in 1974 in second grade, having moved here from California, I became a half-day Monday elementary kid. I now have had three children go through FCPS. The fourth one finished his kindergarten year at Union Mill Elementary yesterday, and maybe with the end of my second generation, we might fix something that apparently befuddled school boards for 40 years. No matter how long-serving school board members were, this problem didn't get solved for 40 years. So I'm proud of this board for taking on the effort to solve something that apparently was an unsolvable mystery for the last 40 years. I've done a quick calculation that this school year included 34 Mondays. And this is why, two and a half years ago, I began a dialogue with the previous leadership over our ability to comply, as Ginger Shay pointed out tonight, with the state standards of accreditation. And in 34 Mondays, two and a half hours on every Monday for every student, times seven years of an elementary career of kindergarten through seventh grade is 108 days. The gift of 108 days of education at an average of five and a half hours of seat time in a day is 108 days of additional education that we're going to give an incoming kindergartner. That is an amazing opportunity for something that wasn't solved for 40 years. We, we are in a difficult place of this being quick, but quick doesn't mean wrong. I had somebody, a bunch of somebodies, my PTA presidents, who were actually upset that a survey went out, because after meeting repeatedly with my PTA presidents and providing the information, they said, "The information is so crystal clear that students will benefit, particularly disadvantaged students will benefit, that the workload is finally taken care of and you're going to commit to a regulation behind it, and that you're going to have a fidelity of implementation that you're willing to honor and treat our teachers as professionals, that you're going to solve a decades-long workload issue that was also not resolved. You're going to create consistency for families, and there are really going to be some budget efficiencies in the long term for this in having a consistent schedule instead of one schedule, four days a week, with a different schedule the fifth day a week." We're annoyed that you've come back out and asked us again. You were elected to lead, do it. What an amazing concept that the 12 of us were elected to do something, and sometimes those are difficult things, sometimes they're slow things, sometimes they're quick things, but when it's right, it's right. I want to especially thank Ginger Shay for early conversations after I was elected that began the process of asking a lot of questions of the previous administration about how we met and documented transparently and with a great degree of accuracy what was happening in our school division with 54% of our students who are elementary students, and how we were accounting for meeting those standards of accreditation. In addition, we had the piggybacked issue of never resolving the teacher workload issue. And it's true that there is, you know, some hesitation that another promise from another administration is going to not translate into what we think it is. But it's a new day for FCPS. And there is a tremendous leader at the end of this dais- And there is a tremendous leader at the end of this dais who has worked more collaboratively, more transparently, more accountably than anyone I've ever seen in this division. And she's at the helm. So there is an element of trust that must come into this. When I look at the calculations, we can't continue to do and educate children in 2014 and beyond in the way that we did in the 1970s just because we've always done it that way and we can't figure another way out of that paper bag. That is no longer an acceptable answer. We heard a wonderful speaker earlier who said, and gave a quote, oh, it's Jim Caker, I think it was, who said, "Excuses are the tools of sculptors making monuments to nothing." We no longer have the latitude or the luxury to deprive children in our elementary schools of 108 additional days cumulatively from kindergarten through sixth grade. And I want to thank the previous administration for being obstinate and giving me the data that I needed to understand that we were being compliant with the standards of accreditation because their obstinacy led to an equal and opposite reaction of my relentlessness to pursue an actual understanding of how we could possibly meet day after day, month after month, year after year, the standards of accreditation with the way that we were doing it. And the answer was, we couldn't and we weren't documenting it. And now, finally, with the intervening event of snow days, snow days, snow days, snow days, and all the kids twittering him and twittering me, asking for the days off, and I said, "You're not going to want this at some point. You're not going to want this because June 23rd doesn't look so good and June 24th doesn't look so good." And we couldn't even imagine at that point, June 25th. And courtesy of the Virginia General Assembly saying no to giving us the King's Dominion waiver, we can't fit 180 days or 990 hours in if we have any weather. So the time for innovation, we talk about innovation in the classroom all the time, innovation in curriculum. How do we get kids to learn? How do we get kids into the building if we can't start until after Labor Day and we have snow and we couldn't do it? So we had to add on Presidents' Day and we had to add on additional Mondays extended to full day. We talked about, and Dr. Garza and this board seriously considered, cutting off part of spring break, sending kids to school on Memorial Day. Virginia Beach had to send kids to school on Saturdays. This is no longer a workable solution to leave parents in limbo every year about what days are actually going to become school days. It's not a question of the calendar is the calendar. The calendar was changing up till a few months ago. How many kids are already gone and on vacation these last three days and what efficacy does that give? Why don't we take the leadership role and give the gift of efficacy of that time back earlier in the, in the year so that it becomes meaningful, student achievement-oriented time? So we're going to look at a calendar now that is going to solve student achievement, not solve it, it's going to help it. Let's be practical. It's going to help it, is going to certainly help and honor our teachers as professionals in the classroom and give them planning time as elementary teachers for the first time that is on par and has parity with their middle school and high school peers. And we're going to address a wild budget and family devolving school year calendar courtesy of the Virginia General Assembly that we couldn't control any other way except through the innovation that Dan Paris and his working group so thoughtfully carved month after month after month since the fall. I saw iteration after iteration after iteration and they worked so hard that to think that they were not honoring the needs of teachers and specialists and educators in the classroom is to dishonor their work. They worked so hard to specifically honor that. And Dr. Garza, whose, whose career started as a teacher in the classroom, knows and understands the professional need of a teacher to do that planning. So how great is it that we get this opportunity to believe that we can do better in Fairfax County? I think that our election, we had a turnout that was less than 36%. So all of us were elected with a lower than 36% turnout. Was the survey fast? Yes, but it was a 36% turnout. 36% turnout and among parents who voted for either 2014 or 2015, 94% of parents said, "Do it and do it now." When you combine teachers and, and 72% of all the people who responded to the survey, teachers and parents, 72% picked a date, either 2014 or 2015. And out of that 72%, combined teachers and parents, 91% said, "Do it." None of us got an election result up here of 91 or 94% that put us into the seat. I'd like to see an election result that gets us 91 or 94%. So finally, finally, I spent two and a half years on this, I'm going to take 12 minutes. So finally, we have the opportunity to hand out a hand, and for the teachers who are nervous, we understand. It's not going to be perfect. It's not going to be everything that we think it is right now, even sitting up here. Hold us accountable, communicate with us, and anything that doesn't work well, we have the opportunity to just improve all the more.
Okay, thank you. I have Mrs. Strauss to be followed by Mrs. McLaughlin, Mr. Velkopf, and Mrs. Reed. I understand that this is a very important issue and, you know, both members probably have a lot to say, but if we could limit, try to do 30, 40 minutes at a time and when time permits, then I'll come back for the second rather than doing 12 minutes per person right now. Mrs. Strauss.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moon. I will support this motion. I do believe that it is, as has been said, I think it's a win for, for our students, for our teachers and our families. Certainly, two and a half hours of additional instruction every day is a wonderful benefit to all of our kids and it does provide us the window to continue to implement foreign language in the elementary school in more elementary schools. So for the teachers, for the first time, not only are we going to regularize the planning time, it's going to become a very public commitment written in regulation and everybody knows about it. We've talked a lot about the fact that our teachers are truly overworked. They really do want to provide the professional quality. That's why they are working with us. That's why they work with our children every day. But we have not given them the time, the support that they need to do the work that they came here to do. So we will all stand guard, link arms to make sure that the planning time that is promised and the regulations written will be delivered in the way in which it has been promised. I visited all of my elementary schools in the last couple of weeks to talk about this initiative. I, quite a few of my principals have the ones that have been working on this for some time, so I was well aware of the fact that they felt that we could move this forward. There will be those principals who will help each other to make this plan work, to make it work well for teachers. And again, as I spoke with schools, I said the bottom line is we are guaranteeing the time that the teachers need, the time that they want, in the way in which they have told us they need the time. Otherwise, this is all for naught. So this is a promise that we all make, Dr. Garza makes, the school board makes, and it is a promise that the principals have to make too when they make their master schedules. We must deliver on this. Obviously, this record, this regularizes the school calendar for elementary, middle, and high school. While a lot of schools did some fun and exciting things these last three days of school, I think we could all acknowledge that we need to build in more time during the school year when learning is most needed, certainly before the last three days of school. We may continue to experience difficult weather patterns, so we've got to come up with, with a different approach. The other piece that I think is significant is we have heard from several members of the Board of Supervisors that they have found money in their budget and that they will allocate it. Supervisor John Faust, who is my colleague in the Drainsville district, called me and called Dr. Garza the other night and said he will work to bring money to us for this initiative. Sharon Bulwa is on record, as is Jeff McKay, and we are hearing that other supervisors will help us. So I think we will have the money, we have the plan, we have the commitment, we know that our parents support it, we've heard that for a very long time. So I think that we will be able to give this gift to our children and our teachers and our families next fall. Thank you.
I have Mrs. McLaughlin next.
Thank you. I'll try to reiterate, I think, the points that are most important and just echo that I appreciate what my colleagues have shared so far. I do believe, as with later start times, that this full-day Monday is a mission-critical issue for our school system. This is how we improve student achievement. As stated earlier tonight, these elementary school students starting in the fall, they're not going to get that precious year back in terms of their learning opportunities. And I, I do believe that based on the fact that we are not meeting Virginia state accreditation requirements, we must solve this problem for the fall. I also think that, as stated earlier, that our teachers at the elementary school level have said that their individual planning time has not been protected. So when we talk about why do this now, I ask myself, why would I wait another year to address problems we know that exist now? And we have the determination, the commitment of our superintendent and her leadership team and this school board, along with our teachers associations, to be engaged in figuring out the how. How will we accomplish this? Many of you have watched Dr. Garza's leadership in this first year. And many of you out there know that I ran for the school board over two and a half years ago because of concerns about the leadership at the top. In this year, Dr. Garza has earned my complete trust and confidence in the way that she wants to lead this system, to honor our teachers, to honor our students, and to honor our families. And so I do believe that this board is not rushing to judgment. We have had weeks to discuss it through the work sessions. We've benefited from the community that wrote to us. All of our stakeholders over the last several weeks wrote, expressed concerns about various issues, and Dr. Garza and her team basically took this proposal, they refined it, and they've brought forward something that I believe is going to be in the best interest of all of the stakeholders in our community. There's a question about cost. This is about wants versus needs, and I do believe this is a mission-critical need. So the cost is, is a true priority for our budgets. It's actually a non-negotiable cost, non-negotiable cost in my mind. Yes, we will have to use one-time funding for the fall, but what it does say is that this board, this superintendent understands for the following budget years and the budget years to come, we believe this is part of our operational responsibility to have full-day Mondays. So I'm not worried about setting a precedent. We're not talking about frivolously identifying something that we want to use with recurring funds. This is saying when we identify a mission-critical need, that we will look at our funding and we will make it happen now, not a year from now. I do also want to emphasize that Ginger, Virginia Fitzshay, your 25 years of tireless advocacy on the behalf of our students and our families is to be applauded. You have so selflessly dedicated yourself to this, and I do believe that especially for our students and our working families who have questioned for 25 years, why do we have early release Mondays? You have helped this system move forward in the right direction and I'm deeply grateful for that. I'm also grateful to my colleague Elizabeth Schultz and many others, including Mr. Paris and Dr. Garza, who have really invested so much time in saying this is the right thing to do and if we can do it in the fall of 2014, we need to do it. I want the teachers to know out there that I have always said, your individual planning time needs to be honored. And it's been stated tonight, it's going to be put into regulation. That means we address the problem now, this fall, not a year from now. And again, through my trust in Dr. Garza, I know that that is going to be honored. And for the, to the teachers out there, we will want you to stay engaged on this. If there are issues at individual schools, I know from my experience in working with Dr. Garza, she wants to know about it and she wants to fix it. She wants fidelity of implementation, especially in something this important. So I just want to close by saying that this is about more instruction time for students, more playing time for our teachers, and a standard school day for our working families. It is the win-win-win. And I really look forward to seeing all of my colleagues standing behind this tonight and voting in support for it.
Thank you. I have Mr. Velkopf to be followed by Mrs. Reed and Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to say a couple of things about the unfortunate tone of some of the communications that we've received in writing and in person about this issue. I would remind the 14 of us who have earned the lifelong title of honorable that we have a responsibility to model honorable behavior for the public and our employees, and that goes for both our written and our spoken communications. My first reaction to this, when this came to a work session, was that, man, this is a great plan and we should do this in 2015. And I shared all the concerns about the haste with which we were moving and I shared the concerns about how we were going to finance it. Two things have happened that have brought me along. And first of all, I have received assurances from superintendent, the deputy superintendent, that the issues that we're concerned about are manageable. And then with regard to the supervisors, of course, they've come forward volunteering money for us and they're fully aware that we're using one-time money for recurring expenses. Of course, my concern when I first heard that was we've completely undermined our case for our budget negotiations with the Board of Supervisors next year. But I think that their commitment that they're making to us makes that argument really not, no longer a concern for me. I would say that I think that, it's, it's my view that really the board owns the, the speedup of the implementation. I think we all know that the superintendent intended to go out with this in 2015 and that that's why the, there were elements of communication that were planned to go forward over the coming months that are being curtailed and abbreviated. And we, the board, really have to take ownership of that. I certainly do. And I, I will simply say, I, I'll leave it to my colleagues, but I would encourage everybody, all the employees, all the parents, if you have concerns, frustrations, disappointments about how this is being implemented, that it's being implemented, please contact me. I certainly want to talk to you and, and hear you because in the end, what we're making here is a political decision and the superintendent is following the guidance of the board. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that we're taking responsibility for this. So the last comment I want to make, I want to go back to the advertised budget in February. At the time, I thought we made a very powerful statement by voting unanimously to support the superintendent's budget that we sent to the Board of Supervisors. I know full well that a couple of our members were very concerned and yet they, they closed ranks and participated in that unanimous vote. And tonight, I want to emulate their good example by contributing my voice to this motion and I am hoping that it will also pass unanimously. Thank you.
Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. I'll try to be brief and not repeat what others have said. This issue to me is all about leadership. I too want to thank Ginger Shay when I first came on the board in 2009. She was the lone voice and she'd come up there and she knew in her heart this was the right thing to do and God bless her, she never gave up. So thank you, Ginger. And my colleague Ms. Schultz, since she came on the board in 2011, she was another voice that just kept saying- voice that just kept saying, asking questions, and going to staff, and going to the superintendent, and meeting with anybody that would meet with her, because she just couldn't understand what was going on and why we weren't trying to fix something that was clearly broken. So I applaud your leadership also. And Dr. Garza and Mr. Paris, thank you too for being brave enough to take this on, because this is a thorny issue. But yet, it makes sense. When you step back and look at it, there are many moving pieces, but it solves so many issues all at the same time. Is it perfect? No. But again, to be a leader, sometimes you have to say, the time is right. The pieces seem to be fitting together in such a way that we have addressed many issues and challenges at the same time. So I think it's really kind of a win, as someone said, win-win-win situation. I did want to say, though, thank you to everyone that wrote in, people who talked to us about their points of view. And a few people even said, you know, I'm writing in, you'll probably never read this, it probably won't matter. That's not true. I think I would speak on behalf of all of us, that we listen very carefully to the input that everyone has had to say. And it really did make a difference, at least as far as I was concerned. It was not a done deal. I mean, I think as we ask questions in every work session, we still had a lot of questions in our mind. I think, though, at this point, with a vote from this board, we can make some truly meaningful concrete actions to address a number of issues. One, the achievement gap. Again, been on this board five years, and I really can hardly point to many things where I feel this is clearly going to, I mean, I will just say, I know it's going to improve that. We just know the time in the classroom, especially at the elementary ages, that is going to help not just our needy kids, but all kids. So to me, right off the bat, you know, that's just a winning proposition. The teacher workload and planning time, again, these are issues that we've been talking about for years. The calendar challenges and this issue, this thorny little issue about meeting the state requirements, which, you know, can't be understated. And student health. I mean, to get kids more recess and to get them out there playing and getting rid of some of the stress that they have, my gosh, that's a very, very good thing. A few caveats, though. I still, along with Ms. Hines, I think, feel a little bit unsure that we haven't quite worked out all the implementation details. And that's okay. But for people who have written in and who still have valid, valid concerns, please keep writing in. And I'm assured that the superintendent and staff will be working on those issues and will make sure that people feel comfortable. And I know for the teachers, again, as Ms. Hines said, when we say, oh, trust us, you know, it'll work out. You know, this issue of planning time and this issue of trust us, again, is nothing new. Nothing new there. But this is one of those times. I think it's been a new day in the past year since we've had this new superintendent. And I feel like we all are working as part of a team now in the community. And I think this is an opportunity for us to work through some of those issues together. And last but not least, the little issue about the money. I would like to get an IOU from the Board of Supervisors so that we can actually get the commitment written down. I'm very happy that they seem to, some of them at least seem to be willing to put the money where their mouth is. And so that is my last wish, is that we can actually get something concrete from them. And then I think this is just absolutely a home run. Thank you. I'm very happy to support this.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Reed. I'm going to task Mrs. Reed to get that IOU from Board of Supervisors. Mrs. Smith.
I want to first start by saying that Tammy Darinett Kofax isn't here tonight because her mother passed away this past week. And I know this issue really concerns her in a lot of ways, too. She feels like we need to get there. But she was very concerned about the community engagement, that we don't have teacher input, and really understanding how this is going to work in all our schools. So Tammy and I had talked about bringing forward an amendment to support moving forward but waiting a year, to really get some information about funding and how we would do this. And she called me before the meeting tonight, and she asked me to, you know, state where she was on this. So with that being said, I do have issues. There's a lot of pressure on me to vote yes. And I need to talk about some of my concerns. I do agree that we need to get to a place where we do time differently for kids. And I think the biggest indicator of that is the recess issue. I know we talk about more instruction for kids, but it's really not clear what that instruction's going to be and how that time is going to work out. So I still have questions about that. I also have a little bit of heartache going from counting days to counting hours. Because typically, we have two or three days off a year, and so now 177 days is okay. And I understand you make it with hours, but days and hours aren't equal. So it gives me a little heartburn. I know other school systems do it. But I wish there was a way we could still build in some days so you didn't get under 180 days for kids. The details, I really appreciate that staff was responsive to some of the initial concerns that came out from music educators, that came out from board members. So changes of music isn't going to change. The change is about using certain employees to cover time. So there was a change in how much time there would be for teachers to have planning. I think, you know, having time to be able to use FLEX and using one-year contracts so that we have flexibility to move forward, I think those are important reactions. But I need to be a voice for those teachers that are concerned, for those parents that feel like this change is happening too quickly for them to have input into this, that it in a way does pit the differences that we have for our families and how we live our lives. I was a stay-at-home mom. Man, I loved Monday afternoons. And I understand that we do need to make changes, because we want to improve education for kids. We need to regulate the passing time for, the planning time for teachers. But I feel a responsibility that we need to spend a little more time listening as we get to those answers. The funding, nobody's really talking about the thing that's out there so much with our employees that they don't understand why we have money in the future that we didn't have to do their raises. The money wasn't there. This is money that, at the end of the year, hopefully, there will be funds, but you didn't have that money when you were developing the budget to say, we have money now, we can put into the raises. And that's hard for people to understand. And it is heartburn to use one-time funds for recurring costs. It's not the best budgeting practice, which is the reason that Mrs. Darinett Kofax and I wanted to delay this for a year so we could plan to use the funding. Because as I've said when I've done PTA meetings, I don't care if it's $2.5 billion, it's still limited funding. And we are making a commitment now to how that funding is going to be used. And if we don't get as much funding as we request in the following year, other things have to be cut to do this. Those are the choices. That's how it works. And so we are saying this is a top priority about other things. I do think also, when you talk about knowing new initiatives and stress on staff, this is stressful. Not knowing what your year is going to be like next year. How am I going to do this? That is added stress so late in the year. I appreciate the passion of my colleagues. I appreciate that the superintendent and staff are going to work hard. I think they will do the best they can do to implement this in the best way possible for kids. I just have to recognize that there's concerns out there, and I would prefer if we waited till 2015. So I am going to vote no on this issue. Thank you.
Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank all of my colleagues for their comments, and I will try not to repeat too many of them. This is a red-letter day for us. You know, this is something that we are doing, fixing a very longstanding problem that some believed couldn't be fixed. This is quite an impressive achievement. I do know it's been a quick turnaround. But I believe that as time has gone on and each issue that has come up has been met. Each challenge has been met with a solution. And very quickly, we can't be paralyzed by fear. And I think this is something that we, for all the reasons that have been outlined today, benefits our students with more time, benefits our teachers with more unencumbered planning time, benefits our students' health with more recess time, which is absolutely critical. To have only 10 minutes of recess time has been a great heartache for me for years and years. And we believe that for most parents, it fits their schedule a little bit better as well. The instruction time is absolutely critical. We know whenever we talk about the need for dealing with higher achievement, and particularly our disadvantaged students, we talk about time. We talk about needing more time. And it's not just a matter of the quantity, it's also the matter of quality. We need to be thinking about how we are organizing our day. And this master schedule does think very carefully about how we are organizing our elementary school day. And it's done in a better fashion than has been done in the past. I do also appreciate people bringing concerns to us, and we do need to continue to listen to them. I agree with Mrs. Reed that, yes, I've read every email that we got on this subject, and I have taken them to heart. Some of them have been passed on to the superintendent to say, okay, what's the answer to this one? What's the answer to that question? I think that needs to continue on throughout the summer and will continue on throughout the summer. I think we need to be sure we communicate just the fact that we have some new holidays, you know, for student holidays, that parents are going to have to realize, oh, we now have this day off and that day off. We need to be sure we communicate that. There are parents who go out there and they put it on their calendar, and we don't want anyone to be surprised when that happens. As far as the money, I believe we are going to get really a good bang for the buck from this. We are going to get bang for the buck in terms of the quality and time of education for our elementary school children, as well as dealing with the teacher workload issue, the issue of teachers wanting, needing, having to have more unencumbered planning time. And that's just, you know, that's absolutely critical. And this finally, finally has given us something concrete to vote on in that area. I would say, also, I just want to also add my voice to the shout-out to Ginger Shea, my constituent. I would proudly claim you as my constituent, Ginger, and who has been a relentless advocate for more than 20 years, and bless you for that. She has gone through when the state law changed and recess was no longer considered part of the instructional day. She went in and looked at our schedules, elementary school by elementary school, and looked at the instruction time. And that was incredible work to make us aware of what we were dealing with. So thank you, Ginger. Thank you very much. So I would just say, I do support this. I wholeheartedly support it. I did have a few concerns about the speed with which we were working in terms of the public engagement, but I feel confident that we have done due diligence on that. And I look forward to seeing this implemented in September and the impact, the very positive impact I believe this will have on our students.
Mr. Stork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think there's probably a few things that have been left unsaid. I'm trying to think what they are, but there probably are a few of them. But I'm going to just say, first and foremost, my first priority always has been, always will be students. That's why I ran for the board, and that's what my commitment is to my community. Secondly, I wanted to just identify that 90 hours of additional instruction, that's just an amazing amount of instruction. We lost that time in about 17 or 18 of our key and neediest elementary schools about four years ago. And I will never forget that. And I will never accept the fact that we did the right thing then, and I didn't support it then. And I'm just pleased that we were at the opportunity, we can bring that back and help those schools who need it the most get that additional instruction. And I think it's essential that we have more recess, what we need. Our kids need nowadays, many times, isn't necessarily more academics, they need more free-play time, that creative time, that time to learn socialization skills the hard way. Most of us have learned those that way, and I strongly support that. The second major reason, I think, is that we have deferred, defined, and regulated teacher planning time, and we can really make a dent in the workload issues. There's no doubt that this is going to do that. There's just not. I realize there's a lot of doubts, because people aren't as familiar with what is being done, but I'm confident when they see it, they'll be very pleased. And the fact that we can add to that, maintain the specialty program, the specialist programs, we're not really losing anything there, I think those are all big pluses. Meeting state standards, yeah, maybe we ought to do that, right? It's probably a good thing. So I'm teasing a little bit, but we recognize that we've been skating on thin ice on that one for a long time. I'm pleased that we're finally addressing that. And finally, having funding assistance, one of my biggest concerns, we just passed a budget, we didn't have this. But hearing Chairman of the Board of Supervisors say that this is a priority, they're going to help us out on this, gave me the confidence that we could afford to do this and move this forward. And I know Jerry Highland, my local Board Supervisor member, is strongly supportive of this and knows that our neediest schools are desperate for this additional time in school. My final and last comments on this is, one of my good friends on the school board was very fond of saying, and actually very fond of quoting another school board member, a former school board member, and that is, "A year in the life of a child can never be recovered." And I deeply believe that, and that's why we're doing it, if, for, no other. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stork. I seem to be the last one on this before we vote on the motion. Then I was certainly hoping for unanimous support of this motion, with Mrs. Smith indicating she wouldn't be able to support it. We're not going to get there, but I'm glad to see most of the board members, you know, supporting the change of the master schedule from September of this year. That, based upon what Mrs. Smith said, that, I mean, my interpretation of what she said is that it's not that she doesn't support uniform Mondays, she just fears that we're have a better implementation and better planning by waiting another year, you know, giving ourselves another year of a planning. So her voting no on this motion, I take that as lawyer opposition. And I appreciate Mrs. Smith for, you know, pointing out things that we need to work on. And I, as a one-board member, this is my last board meeting as a chairman of the board. But as a one-board member, I will do my best to work with my colleagues and the superintendent to make sure that we get, we address all the concerns raised by not only the teachers, but the parents and, you know, board members as well. And I think I set this a couple of times at least at the work session. This is my 15th year. I think I am finishing on my 15th year. From July, it's going to be my 16th year, believe that, on the board. This is the second most exciting thing. It's happening to be, happened to this board, you know, from my assessment. You know, first one is a full day, you know, first one is a full-day kindergarten, and now a full-day Monday. When we completed the full-day kindergarten, Mrs. Smith and my colleagues remember that, our financial situation was not that good either. But there was a commitment, there was a commitment the board was making, seeing the importance of having full day for our kindergarteners. We talked about resource issues, recording versus non-recording, using one-time funding to do something which required the recording expenses. But I'm willing to commit to this for the rest of my life, for the rest of, you know, this board's work. So we are making that commitment, and I'm happy to be a part of that. This is an exciting day for us, a new day for us, with a let me call for the vote on the motion, which is, the school board approved the master calendar revision for the 2014-2015 school year, which modifies the approved 2014-2015 standard school year calendar as detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor of this motion, raise your hand. All those in favor of this motion, raise your hand. Strauss, Evans, Schurz, McElvin, Moon, McLachlan, Hines, Reed, Velkopf, Stork, opposing, Smith. The motion passes with Mr. Leno Cofax absent.
Mr. Moon.
Dr. Garza.
Just want the, you know, I recognize this is the timeline is very difficult. And I hope that, and I appreciate the confidence of this board, but I do want, I do recognize their concerns, but I just want everyone to understand that we, you have my full commitment to making this a number-one priority this summer. It'll be all hands on deck, including this person. We will hold the hand and work with every single principal in our division to make sure this is right. And I recognize we have a lot of work to do this summer. So, for those of you that are concerned, get, sit at the table with us. Let's figure this out together. But I do believe this is important, important work. I recognize the timeline is tight, but if we don't decide now, we've got another year or we have to wait. So, I'm, you have my full commitment that this will be good for children, and I appreciate the support of this board and the support of the community. Stand with us, let's make this a really good thing. Thank you.
Okay, then to go, Mr. Ash.
So, I'm going to exercise, I think this is the second time I've done it, my right to state how I would have voted. So, at the beginning, during all of these discussions, I was going back and forth because there were certainly pros and cons to each side, but at the end of the day, a year is a whole year. It's, I was thinking, I mean, I was reflecting as I wrote my remarks, it's been a year since I started this position, and that seems like forever ago. And I don't want to, and I don't want to waste that time in another student's lives, and not just one student's life, but all of them. All of those elementary schoolers are going to get all of that time, those starting in kindergarten will get seven years of it. So, it's not, and it's not just the increased time in class, it's the increased promised planning time, and as well as the increased recess, which will help teach good physical health and encourage good mental health, less stress. These are all great goals. The one thing I would caution is the community engagement during this process. Seven, as Mr. Pessaro was saying, we don't want seven days to become the new landmark. We don't want that to be what everyone, what everyone expects. We want to give people the full time to react. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ash. Next item of business, originally it was going to be 4.03, but with the passage of 4.02, 4.03 is now moot, and we will not be considering it, and we'll go to 4.04, Regulation 2601.28P, Student Rights and Responsibilities. And I have Mrs. Smith for the motion.
Thank, thank, thank you, Chairman Moon. I move that the school board adopt Regulation 2601.28P, Students' Rights and Responsibilities as detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Evans. Mrs. Smith, you want to speak on your motion?
Just briefly. The school board discussed in detail the regulation of the SRNRs at our, SRNR at our May 12th work session. The superintendent had a committee of staff members that did a lot of work on the regulation, with the real focus being that we want to make sure that we have safe schools, but we want to keep kids in schools as much as we can to educate them. There's also, I'm not going to go over all the changes, they're in the cover sheet, but changes such as permitting but not requiring that students would have a suspension of up to 10 days when referred to the superintendent, that can be less, information about adding smoking devices such as electronic cigarettes and hookah pens under tobacco products, clarification of the need to have a note to leave school early, and permit principals to take action other than referral to the division superintendent when a student self-reports involuntary turns in a knife or other non-statutory weapon. And there's also going to be a change to support this, to have a position in each high school to help support students. So, I think there are beneficial changes to the SRNR, and I urge the support of all my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Evans.
Yes, thank you. I am happy to second this motion. We continue to make progress on our student discipline approaches, and this continues a process that we started, really, three years ago of reviewing the SRNR and bringing a better approach to our student discipline. The fact that this goes the next step to keep our students from being out of school as long as they have sometimes been in the past, that it allows for more in-school suspensions, and we have more support for that, I think that this goes a long way. So, I do certainly support the changes that are being made. I do continue to have concerns about the parent notification piece. Last year, we made a significant change in parent notification, where we required that we, that administrators make, notify parents as soon as practicable, and certainly before any written statement is requested. I believe that our principals and our administrators have been diligent about, generally speaking, about the piece about written statements, but I continue to have concerns about the interpretation about as soon as practicable. And I did want, I talked with Dr. Garza about this in the past, and I wanted to get her thoughts on that.
Do you mind if I kind of walk through some of my, and then end on, end with the answer to your question?
Absolutely, please do.
If you don't mind, I am just really proud of this work. Are we there yet with the student rights and responsibility? No. I think we have to keep working on it and keep getting it better. But I'm so proud of our committee of principals, I won't go through, I have their names, but I won't go through them just for, in the interest of time. But Dan Paris, Kim Dockery, and I met with them repeatedly throughout this year, and it was a great committee, very interested in doing what's right for children, keeping our schools safe. But I really appreciate their leadership and vision and forward-thinking attitude. Our goals that we wanted to accomplish is we want to have safe schools, no doubt. We want to reduce, we wanted to reduce the number of days that students miss school due to disciplinary infractions. We need to hold students accountable, but can we do that in a way that still impresses and still supports our educational mission? And I think we've made progress there. Really reducing our disproportionality, you know, we're very concerned about that. And I think we came a long way with educating our principals, and we'll continue to work to get that better. And then really shifting the thinking around discipline being about the same way we look at educational intervention from a behavioral intervention perspective, and really using that opportunity to teach children and help them get back on the right path. So, I want to thank the board for your support of this work this past year. We will monitor, and, you know, you've made an investment in our high schools in helping us with this. I'm very mindful of that significant investment, and we will report to you, make sure that we're using those dollars for the purpose in which they were intended. And then finally, on the parent notification, because I told you I'd get there, I do believe the language in our current SRNR is what it needs to be. I think what we need to do a better job of is investing in training. And so, we have developed a model, we're working on that, where we'll bring in teams of people, not just our principals, not just assistant principals here and there, but teams from every school, including the SROs, so that everyone's hearing the same thing, giving them case studies, showing them examples, how would they do this? And I think the parent notification piece is being done well in some cases, but it needs to be more consistent. And I think we get more consistent when we have more intentional training. So, we're committed to getting that better, to your point, Ms. Evans, and I believe that we'll have a plan to get that done and making it better, including all the other changes that I think are in, headed the right direction for our, for our school system and for our students. So, thank you.
Great, and I appreciate that, Dr. Garza, that, this is an excellent piece of work. And our, you and the principals who worked on this are to be highly commended. I do appreciate your assurance that we'll continue on to ensure consistency with the parent notification piece. You know, a number of us watch that very carefully, make sure that parents really are brought in just as soon as we know their students are in serious trouble.
And I will tell you, it pains me when that doesn't happen. So, I will assure you that we will, we will get better there.
Thank you.
Done. Ms. Evans? I have Mrs. McLachlan to be followed by Mr. Velkopf and Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. Dr. Garza, I do appreciate the detail tonight that you spoke in support of the changes with the SRNR. And as my colleague, Mr. Velkopf, spoke earlier to tonight, sometimes we will have actions before us that may not be exactly what we, as individual board members, would like to see. Maybe it's going too far, maybe not far enough. And throughout the time that we have worked together, you and I, along with Kim Dockery, I very much appreciated how much you've listened to the concerns I have had about restorative justice and moving our system in this positive direction. And while I wish we were doing some more things in there, I agree with you that this is moving us in, in that direction toward the restorative justice, great leaps and bounds, quite frankly. And I just, I wanted to share publicly with you and my colleagues how interestingly what you have put before us tonight reflects the findings of a master's-level thesis of a UVA graduate who is a former Woodson alum and also went to UVA undergrad. And he contacted me and FCPS and you, and you were very instrumental in having them work with him and getting, just finding some of our data. But I wanted you to hear this. He had four recommendations for us to improve our discipline practices, and it's interesting because we're doing this here tonight, and we're moving this direction. Number one, reform your data practices and program evaluation, and we're going to be doing that. Reduce the use of exclusionary discipline by limiting your out-of-school suspensions. We're going to be doing that. Number three, eliminate forced school transfers with fewer exceptions. We're working toward that. And number four, to increase principal discretion. And we're doing that through our principals, through our regional superintendents. We're bringing discipline back to the front lines. Where our staff and our faculty administrators who know those children best can work with our families, work with those students, and create those teachable moments. Because everything we know at the national level of research is when you pull children out of their school building, when you pull them even out of the classroom, they fall further and further behind. He has some outstanding analysis in here about causality, and I wanted my colleagues to know that, you know, we'll share it at another point in time. But what was so profound is when they were looking at all the ways in which a student's achievement is negatively affected, we talk a lot about poverty, and they took data from the National Longitudinal Study and found that the suspension of a student has four times the impact than it does about a student who has responded that they had gone to bed hungry and were struggling with poverty. So, when we look at the things that we, as a system, can try to control and improve upon for student achievement, I think it's really important that we recognize that this is why getting our discipline practices right is so important, because this is how we will help improve student achievement. This is how, I hope, we will also be looking at narrowing the achievement gap. So, thank you again for the work that you're doing with this, and I look forward to supporting your continued efforts on it.
Next, I have Mr. Velkopf to be followed by Mrs. Strauss.
Again, I want to thank Dr. Garza for moving forward with this issue. I think we're making tremendous progress, and I think it's extremely valuable, not only for our school system, but I believe for other school divisions in Virginia. I think we can be a model for them. I suspect, based on things that I observed at a VSBA conference, that this issue is getting attention in the General Assembly, and school boards are going to be looking for ways to respond positively to students without doing zero tolerance. So, I very much appreciate the work that you've done here, and believe that it's going to have positive results throughout the Commonwealth.
Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. I support the revisions. I think a lot of good work has been done, and I'm very pleased that there will be some good training and staff development that is a little more intentional, because that when we make revisions, sometimes that tends to be a challenge. We have to make sure, again, that, that all of this is rolled out appropriately across all schools so that we are consistent, and so that we get the outcomes that we are looking for. So, I think this is an excellent set of revisions, and in many cases, it reflects more accurately what is actually going on in schools. Principals are really not draconian, and so I think that this is closer to what we would consider to be the best of what's going on in schools today. And we just have to make sure that it goes on in this way in all of our schools. So, thank you very much for all of the work, and Dr. Dockery, and Mr. Paris, and everybody else has worked on it. I think it's a fine job. Thanks.
Okay. With that, let me call for the vote on the motion, which is that the school board adopt Regulation 2601.28P, Student Rights and Responsibilities as detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. I have Strauss, Evans, Schurz, McElvin, Smith, Moon, McLachlan, Hines, Reed, Velk, that's unanimous, with Mr. Velkopf absent. Because initially, I saw some chairs missing, PS, not chairs missing, board members missing. Okay. With that, I think we have a couple of follow-on motions. The first one was supposed to come from myself, but I want to note that I've had conversation with the superintendent, and based upon that conversation, the assurance from the superintendent that she has all along intended to provide the school, collect and provide to the school board the data that this follow-on motion of mine, we're trying to seek to gather. So, with that assurance, that I'm not going to present this follow-on motion, and we'll go to the next one, will come from Mrs. McLachlan.
I move to direct the superintendent to collect and report on the data for all first-time possession and/or use of marijuana cases under the SRNR for each academic semester of the 2014-15 school year. The data shall include the total number of, one, expedited written record reviews, two, disciplinary hearings, three, school reassignments, and four, recidivism rates.
Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Schurz. Mrs. McLachlan, you want to speak on your motion?
Yes. I do appreciate Chairman Moon's first motion and his decision to withdraw it based on the superintendent's verbal support. As I shared with my colleagues in an email, this language that I've presented, I did work very closely with the superintendent and Dr. Dockery and staff, and in achieving the superintendent's full support for this motion, I hope that my colleagues will do the same. I think there's value for our public to see this on the written record, that the board supports the gathering of this important data. And as I stated just prior, when we voted on the SRNR changes, this reflects even some of the findings and recommendations that came out of the UVA master's thesis. And this is just, it's good practice. And as we try to demonstrate to our public our commitment, not just to... commitment, not just to implement good change, but to really measure and evaluate our practices, I think that this follow-on motion represents this board's commitment and the superintendent's commitment. So I would ask my colleagues to please, if you have any questions before going to vote on this motion, you give me an opportunity to speak to it. Otherwise, I hope, given the full support of the superintendent, you will also support the motion in front of you.
Mrs. Schultz?
So I want to, in particular, thank Dr. Dockery. And I'm sure Mary Ann Pennarelli, I'm sure you were quite behind that as well. So she's still sitting here. I am so profoundly grateful for the positive efforts of moving forward. And the follow-on motion is something that we spent a lot of time on, talking even on weekends and late, to not amend the SRNR because the follow-on motion is poised in such a way is to acknowledge the really tremendous positive work that we're doing. But it is also to say, you know, it's, there's some things that we want to focus on. And we want to be, above all, transparent and accountable publicly, that there are some things that we want to make sure that we're capturing. And we're not quite sure, at this point, as a board or as individual board members, that where that progress is. And this is kind of like a little bit of a, you know, kind of putting on one of those headlights that all my little kids love, you know, that puts the focus on just that one thing. Everything else is good and it's going well. I do want to take the opportunity to briefly say that I'm still concerned about students with disabilities. That marker hasn't moved. And we know, we've heard from the community about concerns that 14% of the student population are identified as students with disabilities, but they make up 40% of our discipline cases. And so I personally look forward to continuing to work with you on that. That's not before us tonight. There wasn't time. But with my colleagues, I think that this is the right idea, is to do this as a follow-on motion and not muddy any waters with actually amending of the SRNR. But just definitely acknowledge the work that the staff is doing and making a difference in the division for students. So thank you.
I have Mrs. Reed to be followed by Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. I was a little disappointed, actually, Chairman Moon, that you pulled your other, the preceding motion. But I did want to comment in general about this idea of collecting data. And I agree with what Ms. Schultz just said, that it's important that we give some kind of direction to the superintendent about what's most important to this board. And I think any good policy analyst would say, well, you know, what are your most important priority areas? And those are the things that you should be evaluating to see how those policies and practices are working. So I agree, the first-time marijuana use is one that we should get some data on and see exactly what we're doing and how it's working and what impacts are. And then the other one is the whole issue of disproportionality that, Dr. Garza, you talked about. And in particular, the students with disabilities. I think that, in my view, those are the other areas, if we really, you know, don't give us reams and reams of reports. To me, there's only a couple nuggets that we really should be focusing on. And to me, those are them. I don't know that we have enough information to say today whether or not we have made strides in addressing the disproportionality. But I'm hopeful by next year, we'll have some very, you know, fruitful data and some thoughtful analyses so that we can make some decisions about whether we need to do any tweaks or major modifications. But today, and I was just talking to Dr. Dockery, it seems that we're on the right path. And certainly, you've made great strides, you and all the staff, with what has been proposed here. And so I want to acknowledge that and put faith in you that we're on the right path, with the hopes that we'll get that information coming back on these few areas that I've mentioned. And we can see how we're doing in those in particular. So thank you.
Mrs. Strauss?
I support this. And we do collect a lot of data now on a lot of the discipline issues. And certainly, these are highlighted areas I know the board members are very interested in. I have one clarification. Recidivism rate is always very important. And we have, I believe, always collected that. I have a stack probably going back 25 years, particularly of that category. So I would assume, Dr. Garza, when we talk about recidivism, it's more than just marijuana use. Because recidivism across all categories always gives us the idea if we're making progress or not. So I'm assuming that that means more than just marijuana.
Our intention is to certainly cover this in an evaluative report. But we, it'll be probably more extensive than just this because I need to be able to demonstrate to you all that that investment in our high schools and those additional positions. And we do need to track disproportionality. There's some other things that we need to monitor. So I agree with this. And I think that this needs to be included, what Mr. Moon talked about. So I think there's some critical areas that we need to be in position to report out to you on over the coming year.
Right. Because in the past years, sometimes we've had very detailed reports. And I've always valued those. Thanks.
I have Ms. Heinz next.
Yeah, I think my question was just answered. And it's just, you know, I'm trying to remember what kind of data we do get. And, but it sounds like, I mean, I agree with what's been said about disproportionality as something that we have to watch. And it sounds like you're planning to give us some more detailed data about that anyway, going forward. So that's good. I support that.
We do want to task our program evaluation department to make this one of their key program evaluations this next year. We have included a lot of this data, in some cases probably in different places. And I'm hoping to have one comprehensive report.
Anybody else? If not, I'll call for the vote on the motion. Is that the School Board... School Board Director Superintendent to collect and report on the data for all first-time possession and/or use of marijuana cases under the SRNR for each academic semester of 2014-15 school year. The data shall include the total number of, one, expedited written record reviews, two disciplinary hearings, three reassignments, and four recidivism rates. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous with Mr. Velkopf absent. Next is confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding students who have been recommended for expulsion by the division superintendent. Both members have discussed each individual case. And at this time, will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. The first motion comes from Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the chairman of the School Board be authorized to execute on behalf of the board contracts for the superintendent and all members of the leadership team as discussed in closed meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McElvin. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous with Mr. Velkopf absent. The next motion comes from Mrs. Smith.
I move to expel with services a student for possession of drug paraphernalia and a weapon and for distribution of illegal drugs at school.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Reed. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Strauss, Evans, McElvin, Smith, Moon, McLaughlin, Heinz, Reed, Velkopf, Stork opposing, abstaining is Schultz. The motion passes with Mrs. Velkopf absent. The next motion comes from Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal for a student who was charged with a crime in the community and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Smith. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Stork, Velkopf, Reed, Heinz, McLaughlin, Moon, Smith, McElvin, Evans, Strauss. Opposing, abstaining is Mrs. Schultz. The motion passes with Mr. Velkopf absent. The last motion comes from Mr. Velkopf.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal for a student who brought controlled substances to school and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stork. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Stork, Velkopf, Reed, Heinz, McLaughlin, Moon, Smith, McElvin, Evans, Strauss. Opposing, abstaining is Mrs. Schultz. The motion passes with Mr. Velkopf absent.
Ms. Chair, just a personal point of privilege, I'm just going to point out, I abstained from the three cases because I wasn't in closed session. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, Mrs. Schultz. Next item of business is concern agenda. If you could bear with me. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, rules provide for concern agenda, listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the concern agenda have gone through a board committee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the concern agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 5.01, approve the minutes of June 5, 2014, regulars group of the meeting. 5.02, confirm the separations for the period beginning May 1, 2014, and ending May 31, 2014, as detailed in the agenda item. 5.03, approve the appointment of Michael Burke to the ERFC Board of Trustees for a one-year term beginning July 1, 2014. 5.04, approve Amendment 4 to ERFC and ERFC 2001 for the purpose of deleting the reference to the GASP requirement for amortization of unfunded liabilities. 5.05, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the concern agenda? Hearing and seeing the objection, the concern agenda is approved. Next, we have a new business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 6.01, approve the reap, approve the, approve the reappointment of Susan Queen and the appointment of Stephen Lockhart to the Educational Employee Supplementary Retirement System of Fairfax County Board of Trustees for a one-year term beginning July 1, 2014, and August 1, 2014, respectively, and ending June 30, 2015. 6.02, adopt policy 3202, new course proposals and deletion and consolidation of existing courses as detailed in the agenda item. 6.03, adopt policy 5710, property and casualty coverage and bonds as detailed in the agenda item. 6.04, appoint individuals to serve for a one-year term ending June 30, 2015, on the adult and community education, advanced academic programs, career and technical education, human relations, minority student achievement oversight, school health, and students with disabilities advisory committees as detailed, as listed in the agenda item. Next, we have a superintendent matters. Superintendent, Dr. Garza?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I thought about, just because of the lateness of the evening, that to delay my comments till next time. But I think it's really important for us to recognize Carol Kim, Principal Longfellow Middle School. She's been named the Outstanding Middle School Principal of Virginia by the National Association of Secondary School Principals. And I know we all congratulate Carol, who I think will be heading to Williamsburg in the next few days to receive the award. She's an outstanding principal and just a wonderful example of the great leadership we have all throughout this organization. The remaining comments, I'll defer to next time we meet. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Next, we have a report. Is there any objection for us to postpone this until the next meeting? And then we have a board matters. If the board members could really limit their remarks to the absolutely necessary remarks, starting with Mrs. Strauss.
I will pass, other than congratulations to Carol Kim, much deserved honor. She's amazing. Thank you.
Ms. Evans?
I want to send congratulations to Lena Maria Lenis from Stewart High School for being named one of 10 high school teams in the region to be awarded the Extraordinary Teen Award by Arlington Magazine. Lena was nominated for the award by her counselor, Virginia Justice, for her many accomplishments as a student leader, including her time as my appointee to the School Board Student Leadership Program, her active role as an officer in Stewart's Key Club and the College Partnership Program. She also led a year-long shoe drive and took a 14-week tour guide training course through the U.S. Holocaust Museum. She's, I got to know her as part of the Student Leadership Program of the Board. And she is a wonderful young woman and has done so many things for her school and her community. Her story will be featured in the July-August edition of Arlington Magazine. I just want to say congratulations to all of our graduates. I very much enjoyed attending graduations. So enjoy summer.
Mrs. Schultz?
So I would like to pass, but I can't. So a couple of things. One, I want to thank Bob Shaw, who is my appointee to MSAOC, and say congratulations to him for becoming chair for next year. Two, I do want to thank, and thank you, Ms. Evans, for bringing it up. Just amazing graduation season. In particular, Fairfax High School, your keynote speaker in Army Ranger, Joshua Pack, was the highlight of my graduation season. I was deeply touched, not only by what he had to say, but how the young people at graduation responded to him. Fear, trouble, adversity, you know, he overcame them all and gave such a beautiful message as a former FCPS student and 2007 graduate who was grievously wounded in Afghanistan after he attended West Point and became an Army Ranger. So that was absolutely amazing. And then I have a very difficult duty to share, you know, my sad heart out with the West Springfield community after attending such an amazing graduation. And Ms. Tabor, who was too humble to sit on the stage with us, and actually had to have a student walk down her gift as a thank you for being the 2014 sponsor. Her daughter graduated with the 2014 class. And at a graduation event, continuing to serve her community, much loved in the Spartan community, ended up having a heart attack and has just passed away this evening. So my heart goes to my Spartan community. This is a very, very difficult end. And I hope that you all embrace her daughter as you guys move forward. Thank you.
The annual graduation competition has concluded. And let's just say we ended in a draw.
Okay. Congratulations, Mr. McElvin. Mrs. Smith?
Well, I only attended six graduations, but I heard a theme that I've never noticed before. There was such appreciation from the kids who spoke about the teachers and the schools and what they provided. It was amazing. I heard it at the first graduation, but by the third and the fourth, so all six that I heard, it was just such a positive theme that the kids were really appreciative of the work that our staff had done for them. So that was exciting. Rocky Run had their World War II Day, latest generation means the greatest generation. It is so outstanding. They have a YouTube video. the greatest generation. It is so outstanding. They have a YouTube video. I need to get the link and maybe people can see it. They had a wonderful presentation and how many of the veterans that are there. So that was great. Chantilly Pyramid Minority Student Achievement Committee had their program to honor the kids. So I was at the high school one for that, and middle school. And then I was at Franklin Middle School, their counseling group, because they do the ramp stuff. So I just wanted to commend them for a great year. Thank you.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
I just, in terms of the graduation season, I didn't make as many this year because, as some of you know, my son was graduating this year and there was some conflicts. But I did want to say that Ryan McElvin, my colleague, rocks, because I had the rare, rare privilege of getting to hand my son his diploma when he graduated. And Ryan, very thoughtfully, had my phone, captured some great Kodak moments of it. And it was really special to have that time. And it was also for Ryan and myself, really a nice honor to have Dr. Garza join us there at the Woodson graduation that day. So thank you for joining so many of our schools on what's a very special occasion. And I will also say, I had never attended a baccalaureate before, so I attended one as a mother. And it was pretty amazing, very uplifting. And I hope all of us get a chance to experience an FCPS baccalaureate. And finally, I will say, I survived the all-night grad party. With any of you who've ever volunteered for your children's all-night grad parties, I had the 8:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. shift. And it was, yeah, it was because I was on the decorating committee, too. So it was exhausting and, but we had over 300 volunteers come out, and over 400 of the 535 graduates from Woodson participated. So it's really a great thing that we do around the county, and I admire that as a parent.
Ms. Hines?
Yes, Mr. McElvin is a rock star. And you know that if you have to walk out into the Patriot Center behind him, very popular guy, which is great. So that was part of the fun of going to the graduations. And I just, you know, I want to say congratulations to all the graduates. Happy summer to everyone else. And thanks to the South Lakes High School all-night grad party team for giving me a nice fun slot there to work. The casino, it was a lot of fun. So thank you.
Mrs. Reed?
I enjoyed a number of graduations also, but two that were quite notable this year for me were the Kilmer Center graduation. There were four graduates. And very inspiring to see how hard these kids worked to become graduates and how proud their families were. It was just really a very touching ceremony. And also the AIM Bryant, several of us were at that. And that also, really get to see kids who have overcome all kinds of very difficult and challenging experiences. And it's just, again, very uplifting. And as well as the other graduations where we have the kids, you know, half the audience stands up and have over a 4.0, you know, so we kind of have a full range. And that's the beauty of the system, I think. And last but not least, Mr. Velkopf and I wanted to do a shout out to the budget staff. We did do an appreciation for the budget staff, thanks to Kathy Partlow. It was an ice cream social for the budget staff, to thank them for all of their hard work in the past year, and then to quickly remind them that it was just about time to start up again.
Mr. Velkopf? Mr. Stork?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of shout outs. First off, congratulations to all the graduates. And particularly, I wanted to thank all the graduation speakers, not only the folks from outside who always give us insight and enlightenment. And I think particularly the students appreciate the ones that are more recent graduates because of how they kind of navigated that first 10 years, I think, is part of the value for a speaker. But I also wanted to highlight the fact that we have some amazing student speakers and maturity and success and the presence that they have. And one of my favorites always is to go to the Bryant graduations and hear the individual stories of how kids got to where they are and the struggles that involved, can be involving pregnancy and other kinds of detours, if you will, on the way to be a successful graduate. And these were people that deeply committed to that, and they obviously made some amazing sacrifices to get there. So. And the last part of that is, we are, I'm sad to, I guess, remind ourselves that with this year, one of our fabled institution, Landmark Career Academy, is closing its door. We, because of the landmark mall renewal renovation, the school lost its lease there, and the folks who have really shepherded and supported and developed and helped so many kids along the way from more than 20 years graduate, those folks will be really dispersing themselves among our many other transition programs. And they will be, I know, making a difference in the other places that they go. But for them, it's obviously a tough time when they've been doing this for so long and they've made such amazing contributions to kids. So I do want to give a special thank you to them and for all their efforts. They have an amazing track record and the results. And the kids who are there to speak and show what their love and nurturing and care and relationships can do for any student are there for all to see. So again, thank you, Landmark Career Academy, and all the work you've done there, particularly Dr. Bybee and your work. Thank you.
With that, this meeting is adjourned.
This won't be just a second, but I know that if Tammy Dearanakovax was here, she would also take this opportunity, I think, and we, to acknowledge the passing of Dave Tremaine, our principal at Hayfield Secondary School. And what a tremendous loss to our, you know, FCPS. But our hearts and prayers, I know I speak on behalf of all of our board, go to their family. And anyway, he's going to be sorely missed. And what a great, great leader he was.
With that, this meeting is adjourned.
Mr. Moon has asked that I dispense with debriefing tonight, and we'll do it next time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And have a nice weekend.